All right. Good evening. We're going to start at 6:02 PM. The school committee may seek to convene open session and recess to executive session for discussion and/or action regarding those items of business exempt from open meeting under general, under Rhode Island General Law 4246-4. And A, discussion personnel job performance superintendent evaluation, Rhode Island General Law 42-465A1. Individuals have been notified, including the right to have any discussion held in open session.
I'll make a motion to recess to executive session.
Second. All right. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All right. We're going to executive session. Thank you.
All right, good evening. We're going to start at 6:02 PM. The school committee may seek to convene open session and recess to executive session for discussion and/or action regarding those items of business exempt from open meeting under general, under Rhode Island General Law 4246-4. And A, discussion personnel job performance superintendent evaluation, Rhode Island General Law 42-465A1. Individuals have been notified, including the right to have any discussion held in open session.
I'll make a motion to recess to executive session.
Second. All right, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All right, we're going to executive session. Thank you.
All right, we're gonna call the meeting to order at 7:07. So Stuart Landers, he is not able to be here this evening. Brad Shear.
Kate Massanai.
Here.
Paula Winter. Michelle Brusso.
Here.
James Restivo.
Here.
And Carol Vetter is here too. All right, and please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. Do I have a motion to seal the minutes of the executive session?
I'll make a motion to seal the minutes of the executive session.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion passes. There were no votes taken in executive session. And it is my pleasure to have these student recognitions next.
Good evening, members of the community, school committee members. At this time, I would ask for Carter Ustal, Robert Norquist, Rin Perry, and Lila Caswell to please step forward. So for those who are out in the audience, Principal, we are doing student recognitions at least once a month in our school committee meetings. And Principal Rapore said, "This month, I want to recognize outstanding fourth graders." And these four were those selected. So Carter, where are you? Carter, Principal Rapore says, "You are consistent, you have consistent positive behavior and impressive academic performance. He is nearly perfect attendance and is a role model for all of his peers. He is an athlete outside of school and is a positive participant in recess, encouraging others to do the same. Great job." Robert? Robert is one of our top Ry-Cast performers, according to Principal Rapore, and always puts forth his best effort. He is smart, kind, and a responsible young man with unlimited academic potential. Congratulations. Rin? Principal Rapore says, "Incredible growth since he's known you. Has always, is always a hard worker, that you are respectful, responsible, and a great friend to all of your peers. You are a role model for other students with your positive attitude and perseverance, your get-to-it." Congratulations and thank you. And last but certainly not least, Lila? Principal Rapore says, "A consistently top-notch academic performer, a hard worker, a caring friend, and a positive role model for peers. Her leadership in the classroom and in the school environment deserves recognition, and that's why you are all here tonight. Congratulations." So I would ask at this time, if you guys want to go across the school committee members of, who live and represent and are the elected officials of this town, would like to shake your hand and say thank you for an honor of your recognition here tonight. And before you go too far, we do need to have other valuable members of the, of the community who are not elected. Mom, dad, parents, guardian, picture time. So guys, come on.
You want us up there too?
Up to you.
All right, everybody, come on, let's go.
And at this time, it's my pleasure to ask Dr. McGair to please come on up and take the microphone to, for this next student recognition.
So last year, the Providence Journal started a program to honor Students of the Week. And so South Kingston High School has nominated a student every single week. And in, in some cases, and then they're voted on through the Pro Joe app or website. And so some of our students, quite a number of them, but some of them have won. And so we're gonna recognize one of, one of those, those students tonight. The, the student is Patrick Collins. So Patrick, if you'd like to come up, we can say, say a few nice things about you. So Patrick is a, is a junior in the Carpentry or Construction CTE program. And he's a perfect example of a great student and friend. Patrick's dedication to his studies is remarkable and is noticed by all of his teachers. His personal growth has been impressive to watch throughout his time here at South Kingston High School. Patrick is passionate about inclusion. He goes out of his way to ensure everyone feels like they are part of the group. He has volunteered in Special Olympics and participated in the school's Unified Adaptive Physical Education Program and Best Buddies Club. So this, that adaptive physical education class is a class that students can, can elect to take and something that Patrick has. You can often find him hanging out with peers with disabilities, making lifelong connections and community, in, as part of his community support. Stopping by the Life Skills Classroom with a big smile to say hello brings joy to the students in the school. In addition, Patrick is a lifelong hockey player, playing hockey and golf for South Kingston. His dedication can be seen on the ice and on the green, and on, around, in and around the greens. Can't wait to see what skills and gifts he will give to the world. Congratulations, Patrick. The reason why it's one of the winners, right? Patrick, we, we have an award for you too.
Thank you. Thank you, and that concludes public recognition.
Just congratulations to all the wonderful students here tonight and parents, you have so much to be proud, proud of with your, your young ones. So, and thank you for being here. We really appreciate it. But next up, we have comments from the community. So public comment periods at our regular business meetings shall last no longer than 30 minutes. Please approach the microphone, introduce yourself, and provide your address. Please note that any one individual may address the school committee once per community comment, and that comment shall be limited to three minutes. Please understand that this is an opportunity to address the school committee, but it is not a time for dialogue. There will no be, there won't be a back and forth discussion at this time. So with that being said, we have a clipboard, so we're gonna go by the signatures on the clipboard. James?
Mr. Sean Kavanaugh?
Good evening, everyone. Thank you. My name is Sean Kavanaugh, 654 Wardens Pond Road, Wakefield, Rhode Island, 02879. Is there anything else that was required to prevent? I am the father of three wonderful girls who attend school here in South Kingston. Unfortunately, five years ago tomorrow, my beautiful wife passed away, so their sole responsibility for their upbringing falls on me. I'm here tonight as both a parent and an advocate for my twin daughters, who are five years old, on the autism spectrum, and rely on transportation services outlined in their IEPs. I want to make one thing abundantly clear, the district has repeatedly failed my children and violated their rights, not only as students with special needs, but as students who deserve dignity and respect. Since they started preschool in the fall of 2023, my daughters have faced an appalling lack of accountability from the district regarding their transportation. Let me give you the facts and some history about our situation. September of '23, I noticed my daughters were not arriving to school on time. Per policy, I escalated from the school staff to the school committee and finally to the Department of Education. Between September of 2023, the middle of March 2024, the district did not transport my children to school even once, on time, even once. From the living to GPS, GPS data I was able to get from the district, my children missed at least 26 and three quarters hours of school. That's the equivalent of over four days, and that's just what I know of. You may be asking yourself, "Why were they so late so often?" I think then Superintendent Mr. Littlefields summed it up well, and I quote an email from him. "The problem, as it turns out, was poor communication between the school department and the bus company. Ocean State was operating with the understanding that pre-K program began their day at 8:53. P. Stellomentry was expecting the start of the day at 8:40. However, the bus company was having a difficult time, having a difficult time meeting even that 8:53 deadline," is the end of the quote. "Bus company, under your leadership, did not even know what time school started." That's correct. Eventually, I took the district to the Rhode Island Department of Education for a hearing. You provided a lawyer to frustrate and fight me along the way. For those of you who are not aware, Rhode Island Department of Education regulations prohibit special needs students from riding the bus for over an hour. I was able to get to the district to admit that 21 separate times they had violated Rhode Island Department of Regulation, Rhode Island Department of Education regulations in that regard. I have a memo here if anyone is interested. The district is required by regulation to report this to the Rhode Island Department of Education, but only did so as an outcome of the hearing. That's also correct, right? The other result of the hearing was consent order. I brought a copy. Everyone in this room is welcome to see it. An open book. The district is required to have my children in the classroom before the start of the educational period. Time and time again, that has not happened. When I went back to Ry to try to get the district to comply, I was told by the district's lawyer that it was common sense that the district wouldn't comply every time. Many members, I also have an older daughter in the school system. If she was chronically late to school and I told Principal McGair that it was common sense that she shouldn't be on time, how far do you think that would get me? Three times this school year, the district has not provided any transportation for my children at all. On December 6th, you lost my children for narrowly 45 minutes. I called Ocean State Transportation and no one picked up. I called P. Stellomentry and no one picked up, so I left a voicemail. I called Principal Rapore and also left a voicemail with him. Panicking, I then called Ocean State again. The line picked up and then was hung up. I debated calling the police at this time, as the bus was significantly overdue and there was no communication from the school at all. I gave Ocean State one more chance, and they picked up, but I had no idea where the bus was or if my children were even on it. I was on hold with them for nearly 10 minutes. To his credit, Principal Rapore did call back during that time and left a message. School ends at 3:13 PM. Finally, at 4:21, my children arrived home. Aside from Mr. Pedraza telling me that my children were supervised by faculty and staff, during the incident, I still don't know who was watching my children, and because of their autism, they are unable to tell me what happened. Given those events and considering that both of them have autism, I decided to invest in a GPS tracker at my own expense. In addition to discovering that there have been transportation issues every single day since the middle of this month, I also discovered the district had been ending the school day early for my daughters on some days and not telling anyone. On the 14th of January, my daughters arrived home at 3:16, which I found amazing because the school day ends just three minutes before that. We live out near Warden Pond. It's a 13-minute ride from school. It's now January 28th, and this issue is still not resolved. On November 20th of 2023, I reached out to everyone on this school committee, with the exception of Mr. Lander. And it has now been 435 days, and nothing has changed. And you've been able to resolve nothing. You have failed my children and this district. To be clear, this is not a logistic issue. It is a blatant disregard for right, regulations, the needs of my daughters, their education, and their well-being. 435 days, and you have done nothing to fix this. Your response has been to take you back to Ry and fight with your lawyer again. It must be very convenient for you to waste taxpayers' money on a lawyer whenever you need to, rather than to solve problems for yourselves. Where is the accountability? Where is the urgency to ensure compliance? This is not just about transportation. This is about the message you are sending to every family of a child with special needs in this district. When you fail to address these issues, you are telling When you fail to address these issues, you are telling us that our children's education, their I E Ps and their futures are not a priority. That is not acceptable. My daughters deserve better. All children in this district deserve better. It is time for the committee to take responsibility, enforce compliance, restore trust with families you serve. I hope you all think long and hard as to whether serving on this committee is the right place for you, given your inability to lead and provide results. Thank you for the opportunity to share this.
Thank you, Mr. Kavanaugh.
Thank you.
Doral Beasley.
Lynn, so um. Couple of comments before I get to the our main thing of the night. Um. Khan Academy and Khan Migo that are now um being integrated into our high school grades nine through twelve. And it will be available again next year for uh our high school students. It's my um, it's my hope that you'll ask uh Mr. Snow to come up with a plan of how to get Khan Migo and um in the Khan Academy into our middle school next, next year. So that um the teachers could have over the summer, they could have the 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 time and the ability to uh to learn how to use it. And uh I think it's imperative that even though right now it's it's a, you know, quote unquote, a test thing, there isn't, there isn't a day, there isn't an hour that goes by now, if you're looking at your phone. There's an art every, it's article after article after article about artificial intelligence. It's here, okay? You may not like it, but we have, you you have to deal with it, okay? It's gonna be, it's gonna change everything, I believe, over time. And the more that our students know about it and how to use it, it will only help them in the end. So I hope you'll you'll consider that. So I um I looked over the your information tonight you're gonna be hearing about about the budget. And I had to make some, I need to make some comments about it. Okay. You're declining, you're declining state aid and declining state aid in South Kingston. Will continue to go down until such time as our enrollment levels off. Now, I don't see any personally, I don't see that happening in the near future. Hopefully will, you know, with the new high school. Um, our students that are leaving for others, other high schools will stay home. Maybe that happened the first year or two because those juniors and seniors and other high schools are not coming back here that they're too invested in where they are with their friends and supports and everything else. So you're basically targeting your ninth, your eighth graders that are going into ninth grade. Now, you have a, um, there's a note in here about transportation costs. Transportation costs four percent contractual increase on fewer buses. I still, I still have a hard time understanding how you went from a three-tier to a two-tier bus schedule with fewer buses. And I believe the the total, the the total um reduction in the cost is like three hundred thousand dollars out of five point six million dollar um cost. I so the reason I bring that up is this. And I brought it up before and I and and you know, now that we have a new regime in in uh Washington, D C, everybody's saying that all of uh President Biden's initiatives for green energy and geothermal and, you know, wind turbines and all the rest, it's all gonna be thrown away. They're like, they're gonna try for sure. But if they do that, they're gonna, they're gonna, they're gonna eliminate that tens of thousands of jobs that have already been created in this country. So we'll see what happens, but so on the bus deal, right? Um. I asked the the town council, I asked the uh town manager about about four months ago about what would it cost um to get into the bus business for the for the town of South Kingston, the school bus business? And what he said was it would cost about three million dollars for for the people that would drive the buses and your bus monitors and a couple of um of uh mechanics and stuff like that, right? So say, so say we're looking at three million dollars. Well, I believe, you know, next year, I think that'll be like half of what you're paying. So you're gonna pay six million dollars to Ocean State. And if we owned our own buses, you could have, you could save three million dollars a year, every year, year after year after year, until you you had to replace buses. To me, it's a no-brainer. I don't, I I'm asking you to 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 start to look in this and and you know, the car, the auto manufacturers in this country are not gonna stop making electric vehicles and go back to making um V-eight vehicles with twelve miles a gallon. It's not happening. So it's another thing I hope you'll you'll look at very closely, very hard. Now, tuitions says here, you have the same number of students and higher share rates. Okay, here's the thing. So for the last five years, you've you've gotten a level, you call it level funding. I don't call it level funding. I don't believe it's level funding. You get the same amount of money, fifty-six million dollars each from the town council for your schools, okay? Well, here's what's happened. In the twelve years prior to this cycle of uh five, five years going on six, in the twelve years prior to that, our cost per student went up six thousand dollars. So it went from twelve thousand to eighteen thousand dollars a student. It took twelve years in this, in this town, in this district to go up six thousand dollars a student. In the six years that you've had the fifty-six level funding, it's going up another sixty-three thou- sixty-three hundred dollars. And every time your cost per student goes up, so does because rides looking at this number, when that cost per student goes up, so does your out-of-district tuition costs for charter and C T E programs. If you look at what Barrington and East Greenwich are paying for students that they're sending out of district, they're paying four or five or six thousand dollars, maybe not that much, about three or four thousand dollars per student less to send their students out of district because their cost per student's lower. So if you ask this town council for another sixty-three or another fifty-six billion dollars, it's gonna go up again. And who and who who ends up paying that cost? The taxpayers? Almost done. Capital, capital needed investment from, must come from reserves. Okay.
Doral, I, you, you're gonna have to wrap it up quickly. You're well over your three minutes. I wanna be respectful. I'll give you time, but we are in a hurry.
Okay. So on the capital thing, the ride mandates that you put aside X amount of dollars every year for your schools to keep them up. So that should be a line item. That needs to be a line item in your budget. You need to fund that upfront instead of taking it out of reserves and crying poverty, okay? Now, here's the last thing. One minute, thirty seconds, thirty seconds or less. This year, between Narragansett and South Kingston, we're spending a hundred million dollars. These two towns together this year are spending a hundred million dollars to educate thirty-two hundred students. And Barrington's doing it, the same amount of students for sixty-five million dollars. Okay? It's time to start talking. Okay. And also, and here's the last question. This this is for our elected representatives up there on Smith Hill that don't seem to do anything. I don't know, Ms. Ms. Bruce, how many times is uh happened and like Senator Salznowski or or any of our representatives?
Yeah, I'm sorry. We can't, we can't answer questions. It's not a dialogue.
All right. So anyway, um, so Barrington this year is getting eleven million dollars in state and school aid, and we're getting six. And we have two-thirds of students. But six is not two-thirds of eleven.
Thank you, Mr. Beasley. Would anybody like to um comment during public comment? Seeing nobody, um, we will close public comment. Thank you. Okay, um, so next we have our consent agenda.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Again, we have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, that motion passes. We'll go turn it over to Mr. Pedraza for his superintendent report.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Tonight's, uh, in tonight's report, we have one traditional aspect, which is the personnel update. Because I only have two items due to the large number of interviews that are tonight, I kept my report uh brief. It is to two items. The first aspect of it is the traditional uh personnel update of which was posted uh into board docs and is included in your packets. The next item in my report is the equity audit update. Uh, we have members of West Wind uh here with us in South Kingston within the district. And uh I did provide uh a slide for that um posted onto board docs and in in your packet. They arrived uh yesterday evening. Today, they spent the day interviewing a principal of one of our schools, taking a school tour, uh engaging in a grade-specific focus group and engaging in student interviews. Uh, I will note that those, again, those student interviews are done with permission. Uh, additionally, there are student interviews. It is my understanding that are, that can occur outside of school time and at a different location um to make sure that all members of our community um are represented and feel comfortable during the course of those interviews. Um, tomorrow, we will have another interview, a school tour, continue with student interviews. Um, however, West Wind's focus shifts from a teacher focus group and goes on to family focus groups, and that those will be taking place. On Thursday, uh, we have a very similar schedule in terms of an interview, a school tour, new teacher focus group. Again, those teachers' focus groups are uh grade level specific as well as are the student interviews. And then last but not least, on Friday, the remaining principals who have not been interviewed and uh uh tours of the facilities uh will move forward. Um, we are still waiting on the alumni engagement survey aspect. That does not need to be in person. Additionally, we are waiting to see the, uh, West Wind is looking to see the turnout of those family focus groups and is open to doing a uh a virtual focus group to make sure that we can accommodate uh to see if there are any family or community groups that are not represented and can do and and are open to a virtual uh virtual meeting. So that is, we are waiting for that outreach to the community to see if that's necessary at the conclusion of this week's in-person. Uh, and the same will be true for any uh teacher group um grade level or otherwise that um is not represented. We will extend the courtesy of a uh a focus group, but via Zoom. A reminder to folks in the community is that, again, we do, uh, not only are the folks from West Wind, um, we have our, their background checks, but again, they are, most of these interviews um that are taking place are taking place in terms of in the school buildings that are occurring, and they are with parent permission. Um, same thing with our, with our teacher group. Um, we do have two individuals depending upon the releases. So their schedules are different each day depending on the releases because they would ask if people don't mind being recorded. And if they do, they will then have, one will serve as the note taker. Um, same is true for the focus group. If any member of that focus group um is not inclined to be recorded, then they will, then they have a note taker. Um, so there's kind of backups, and that's why um in terms of expediting this, we will the setting up a schedule where they are not together just because to make sure, making, excuse me, making sure the conditions are such that every person either being interviewed or as part of a focus group feels comfortable and we can respect their wishes in order to have them participate fully, open and honestly um makes this for a, you know, a similar schedule, but one that is um not as spread out and robust, happening across multiple schools at a time. And that is my update on the equity audit. How do you take any questions?
Any questions? Yeah, Paula.
Got a comment. So I had um a student that was interviewed today, and she said it was a great experience and it was just great. So I just wanted to say.
So a typical day at school, a great day. Everything was fantastic, a great day. But thank you. Thank, please thank her for participating. And that can
Any other questions? All right, I'll tell you have a motion to accept the superintendent report.
I'll make a motion to accept the superintendent's report.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion passes.
Carol, I'd like to make a motion to move uh school committee business B uh the discussion action necessity of school construction stage three schematic design submission. Um, just one tick ahead of the subcommittee interviews. That's okay.
I'll second that motion.
All right, we have a motion to move item six B ahead of six A. Um. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
That motion passes. So with that, we'll have um the discussion and action on the necessity of school construction, stage three schematic design submission to the Rhode Island Department of Education, to the South Kingston School Building Project. So Kate, you wanna?
Ms. Kate, will you come up to the podium? We have two Kates today. I'm Kate M. This is Kate T. Uh, Kate uh joins us uh from Left Field. Um, so and I'm and I'm going to let you kind of describe a little bit, but just so we're clear, this is um, this is a next state uh phase of our school building committee uh process where we're moving from that schematic design um stage into the um design development stage, and we need approval by this body in order to do that. Um, so I've asked Ms. Kate to join us so that she can answer any questions anybody might have and to kind of give a little bit more formal description as to what the purpose of this is.
Yeah. Thank you, Kate. Uh, again, my name is Kate Turner with Left Field. We're the owners of this project. Um, so tonight, we do need approval from the school committee to submit all of our schematic design documents to RIDE. Uh, they will be doing a thorough design review of our, um, estimates, all of the, uh, research that's been done to date, um, as well as the schematic design drawings and estimate. Um, they'll be providing comments, and then the team will move into design development. Um, we are under a, a tight deadline for design development, so, uh, we do need to seek approval tonight to maintain the schedule we're on currently.
Any questions for Kate? I just have a procedural question. What is the order? I, I do know that the town council also has to approve it. Did they approve it last night?
They did.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
On that topic, I did, do want to clarify that, um, for this particular step, the only approval that they needed was a recommendation from the school building committee and then this body's, um, approval because it was mostly around the programmatic, um, aspects. Um, we were value engineering to make sure we weren't losing programs and making sure our educational, um, programs were intact. And so, uh, we need, we decided and right from the beginning of the project that we were going to be open, transparent with the town council. So we went to make sure that they, um, had a chance to review everything that we get to review, so they get to have input and a voice as well. Um, so this, while we do have a representative from the town, from our body, I'll have to, I'll have you, um, as the chair of this body, um, sign the formal approval document. Um, but it really is, this body is the one that needs to kind of give the thumbs up so that we can move to the next stage.
That's correct. A priori. They only require school committee.
That's good. I just wanted to understand the procedure, so that's great. So, but I am glad the town council is aware and they've approved it also. That, that is meaningful.
So, Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion to approve the necessity of school construction, stage three, schematic design submission to the Rhode Island Department of Education.
Right, we have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
That motion passes. Thank you so much. All right, that's going to bring us to six A, discussion action, subcommittee interviews. I just want to take a minute and, um, describe the process real quick. So we will do all the interviews. Um, Terry has provided a sheet for each person, um, to kind of like score a rubric. And then after each person, we can pass those down to Mr. Seager, um, who will keep track of tallying them. Um, and then after all of the interviews, we'll have a moment for discussion, and then, um, Mr. Seager can speak to the results. So, so some.
The only aspect of that would be if, uh, we don't have, how would you like to handle if we are not at our maximum of public committee members? So for example, if we have one person and three spots in terms of disclosure of tallying of those.
So what I'd like to do is have the, um, interviews, and then once we have those, we can dis- discuss, you know, if we want to, if people couldn't be here, maybe they come back a different day, um, but we'll, we'll have a discussion, but I'd like to get the interviews. Okay?
Thank you.
Okay, we're going to do this, um, the, uh, interviews for budget committee will be first, then policy, then strategic planning, and then wellness. Um, and so thank you all for being here and very much. Thank you for participating, wanting to be part of this. We need community involvement and that you're willing to give your time and talent. Uh, we just really appreciate it.
So, um, one pause for a second. I'm not seeing everyone's printout here in this package.
Not everybody's available.
Okay, so the, the people who aren't in this pack that were not available this evening, is that?
So, I, yeah, I think these are who are here tonight.
Okay.
If you look, if you look at the far right column on the second half.
Oh, thank you. Yes, it's available and unavailable. Thank you. Appreciate that.
Okay, so, uh, Nicole Cordes.
Green light, okay.
We need you more than you need us.
To start, I did submit for the budget and the policy and planning, um, so I don't, hoping I can only do this once, but I guess if I have to do it twice, I will, but, um, not that I don't need to be on both, but I just wanted to offer that. That's where I was interested in participating.
I think it's same questions on both, uh, uh, you know, it's all the same questions across the board, so I think we can use this one interview for both.
Yeah. Absolutely. We want, we're not going to cover, call you up twice to ask you the same questions.
So I'll try to cover.
Okay, um, community connection. Tell us about your connection and involvement in the school committee, school community and greater town community.
So I just want to start by saying I'm Nicole Cordes. I live in the Green Hill Beach section of South Kingstown. I've only lived here for two years, um, came from Connecticut. I did live in Charlestown for two years prior to that, so I'm new to Rhode Island. Um, I lived in Connecticut for thirty years, raised my two sons there in public school for most of that and was extremely involved there. Um, so this is my opportunity to get involved in my local community. Um, I've been trying to find something to give my time to. I've been volunteering most of my adult life and, um, I'm missing that a little bit. I'm retired, um, fortunate enough to be retired and live in this fabulous neighborhood. Um, and so, um, I'm friends with Stuart, who I'm sad I don't see his face up here, but he did warn me he wouldn't be here. Um, and have been talking a lot about the school community with the vote for the new high school and him running for the committee. Um, so he was the one who even forwarded me the information that this was a thing right now, that, um, you were looking for community involvement. Um, so I don't have a lot of local community involvement yet. I am a member of the Green Hill Civic Association, which is just a neighborhood community that does mostly social events. We play pickleball, the new craze. I organize my group of pickleball and try to get as many people as we can together for those events. But school-wise, I was the PTA president for several years at my children's elementary school. I was part of the outreach, I was the, I don't even remember what my title was because it was quite a while ago, for outreach, um, to do mostly charitable, get the kids involved in charitable events. That didn't cost parents money. I was very adamant that if we're going to do charity, I don't want parents just shelling out money that we give to something. We did different projects for the kids to get involved, collect old toys, do stuff for hospitals, stuff like that. Then as my kids got older, um, I got more involved in the sports team side, so I was the treasurer of two different, um, sports teams. So I'm, I've, I have a finance degree, so that's where the budget side of things comes in. Um, I have a finance degree. I worked in finance for, um, all of my career, but I took some time off to raise my children. Um, but, uh, that's where my general focus usually is on that side of things, the number side of things. Um, and all throughout my kids' years in school, I was always very involved in going to board event meetings, especially around budget time, um, to just understand what was going on and where we were spending money and, um, just to try to stay on top of things and understand, you know, why we didn't have the programs we all wanted and why the school board made decisions that they did and, uh, to try to stay involved. Um, so, uh, again, I'm, I'm looking at this as my opportunity to get to know the community better and, um, and get involved and hopefully bring a, a new outsider's view to things. Um, I don't know the history of the school community, um, good, bad, or otherwise. So, um, I'm hoping that that brings a fresh, um, new, uh, new side to things.
Thank you. Uh, so the next one, outreach. Tell us about your interpersonal skills, specifically being approachable, visible, collaborative, and experienced at drawing diverse communities into the conversation.
So again, for the most part, I'm going to relate back to my PTA days of, um, trying to involve everybody, not just the people who were in the in-group that showed up at all the PTA meetings. We used to get a pretty bad rap of people would say, I can't come to those meetings. Those are only for, you know, you guys and I, you guys are your own little group and you don't let people in. I was like, well, maybe that was the old days, but, you know, now we, we need, just like you guys are trying to do to bring community members in, I think it's important to make sure that it's not a little clique of people who all know each other. Um, that other people feel like they can't express their opinion and, and, and can't contribute to, um, what everybody's trying to do. Um, the other thing I'll say is my husband and I, um, have been volunteering for years at a camp up in Maine for children with, um, life-threatening illnesses. We're actually going back for the first time in three years in April to go and spend a week in Maine with children and their families. Um, and that generally is an extremely diverse, um, group of children and families, um, both economically diverse, racially diverse. Um, and, uh, it's, it's a great time to see kids not care about where they came from because they don't know each other and just spending a week with these families and these kids and helping them all just realize that we're all in the same boat and we can all have a good time and get something out of this experience of this camp. Um, I can't wait to get back, um, in April because it's been too long. The move and getting here has, uh, hasn't given my husband and I the time to do that, so, um, again, really just trying to get back into things that mean a lot to me and my husband and our family. Um, so.
Wonderful. Sounds like fun, too. Uh, diversity. How might you provide an enhanced perspective experience considering under, underrepresented groups in the community and including factors such as race, national origin, sexual orientation, gender identity, socioeconomic position, intellectual or physical ability or religion, in comparison to members of the com- committee and other applicants?
I struggle with this one because I look around the room and we're not a very diverse group of people. Um, so I don't know what the diversity is in South Kingstown. I have to be honest. I look around my neighborhood and I see a lot of people that look like me and, uh, drive the same kind of cars as me and shop at Belmont and go out to dinner at Matuna Oyster Bar. So, um, I'm looking forward to understanding what the diversity concerns are in this school community because I really don't know. I hope to, um, bring my own personal experience where you say everybody should be involved and, and there shouldn't be policies that are different for this group of kids because they live on this side of Route One and that group of kids because they live on the other side of Route One or whatever. I don't even know what the dividing lines are that might separate kids in this town. I really don't. I know it's north of Route One and south of Route One, and I still have to use my ways, my GPS to find the high schools, so forgive me for that. Um, and, um, so I, I'm, I'm a believer that it shouldn't matter where you come from or what color your skin is or, um, wh- what your sexual orientation is or what your pronoun is. I don't care. I don't want to know. I want to treat you as a student and I want to help create policies and, and make sure that the budget addresses everybody regardless of all of that and, um, and I know that that's a very idealistic way of looking at things, but that's the way I look at things on a regular basis and, um, I hate when I hear stories that it doesn't go that way, but that's life, so.
Thank you. Uh, experience. What relevant professional and or life experience do you bring as it relates to the subcommittee you are applying for? And you can address both subcommittees if you'd like.
Okay, perfect. So again, I have a finance degree from Sienna College. Started my career in finance. I worked for the FDIC in banking. Um, so I've always been around numbers. Again, that's where my interest in the finance budget committee comes from. I took some time off for, to have my kids, like I said, but still kept very involved with numbers, doing budgets for the PTA and treasury stuff for two sports teams and keeping to a budget. The PTA was a, you know, it was a thirty thousand dollar budget that we had to manage other people's money and, um, it was a big deal at the time. Um, fast forward to when my kids got a little older, I got back into the workforce and I worked for a small, uh, company and I was the, uh, revenue and accounts receivable manager there. So I managed a decent-sized portfolio, did budgets, financial statement reviews, uh, presented uh, Excel spreadsheets and lots of Excel spreadsheets and all that kind of stuff to the president of the company and the board and all that kind of stuff. So, um, that's my financial experience. I feel comfortable with looking at where things are in percentages and why things are observing why they're over or, uh, that they're over and trying to understand why is what I meant to say. Um, policy-wise, I would say similar experiences both at work, um, at my most recent job. Um, we did a lot of, uh, creating new policies to, to run the company that didn't exist before. Um, I was, worked very closely with our customer service team and there was absolutely no interaction between our department and theirs before I got there and I feel I contributed a lot to, um, coming up with different procedures and policies to help the groups work together. Um, I know that's not really school-related, but, uh, I feel I've always worked very hard to make sure different people who have, um, have a say in what needs to happen should be part of how to make a policy and, and how to, uh, incorporate different people's, uh, experiences so that you come up with the right outcome and the right path forward and not operating in a bubble without reaching out to different people to make sure that, uh, you've covered all the bases to, to get somewhere.
All right, and our last question, motivation. What is your motivation reason for seeking out the opportunity to be involved in the subcommittee and commitment to the same?
So first and foremost is new to the area, really want to get involved. So I'm hoping that you'll consider me so that I can learn more about this area. When, uh, the town that I raised my kids in, uh, you can remember, especially before voting time and budget time, there were a lot of, uh, they were old to me at the time, but they didn't seem, they're not really that old because now I'm with the age they were. Um, who never wanted to put money into the school budget and felt it wasn't worth it and they didn't want their taxes raised. And I remember saying back then, when I no longer have kids in the school, I'm not going to base my decision based on whether it's going to raise my taxes or not. I want the decision to be based on what's right for the school community because education is so important in keeping our town desirable to bring in new families. We all know the cost of real estate is ridiculous. And if you have too expensive of housing and you have a bad school system, you're really not going to get people to come here. So I care. I want it to be a good education system. I'm not saying it isn't. I honestly don't know enough about it, and that's why I'm here, because I want to learn more about it. And I want to help promote, I have a, most of my friends do not have children in the school system and nobody wants their taxes to be higher, but there comes a point where you have to make a decision. What do the kids really need to go forward and what's best for the system overall? It's not just about, will it raise our taxes? Um, so that's the view I'm hoping to bring to either committee, if you so choose me, that I, I think there needs to be a balance. We need to invest in our kids, but we need to respect the taxpayers, but not at the cost of the children, so. That's my motivation.
Thank you so very much.
Okay, thank you.
Want to make a note before we turn in our particular, uh, Rubik, there are two copies, one for budget, one for policy. Just want to make sure to fill out both of them so he doesn't have to come back up.
All right. So Liz Messier couldn't be here tonight. And neither could Tim McGrath. So we're going to, they were both on for the Budget Subcommittee. So we're going to move on to the Policy Subcommittee.
I think Laura's in the audience for budget. Or Urban's in the audience for budget. Oh, she's in for strategic planning or something. Yeah, I have a, I have a merger for strategic planning, but not for budget.
Oh, okay. Let's just ask Laura. Is Laura Urban? We have got a little confusion because did, did you want to put in for both budget and strategic planning or just strategic planning?
I, I did put my name in for both, but went ask Terry where there was greater need. So strategic at this point. Yeah.
Okay, yeah, well, well then, thank you. I am glad that you cleared that up and that's wonderful. So we're just gonna, we'll call you back for strategic planning. Thank you.
That's okay.
Okay, so I would like to call Michelle Manning, please.
We were taking bets that you're going to go in alphabetical order. So we were all laughing that catering would go before me. So I'm disappointed. But I'll handle it. I'm a big kid. So hi, I'm Michelle Manning. I'm from Matunik.
Welcome. So, and I, I know you've been on policy before. So thank you for considering putting your name in again. So with that, we'll start with the first question. Community connection. Tell us about your connection and involvement in the school community and greater town community.
So most of you that are on the school committee that are sitting up there probably received email from me. I've written to you about our superintendents. I've written to you about DLI, SRO officers, preschool, free preschool, the AAA policy, adding the reporting to the AAA policy, the equity audit. MLLs was probably my last letter that I've sent to you. So as far as community, I am very interested in what's happening in the schools. I've served on the sit team at Peaceville. I served on the RSJ committee as a co-founder for two years. I'm now, I'm still on the committee. I often attend school committee meetings when there are things that are, I believe are important and people need to come out to support or to let you know our beliefs. I also tutor in the community for the Johnny Cake Center. I've been involved in task. So lots of different, I'm, I work in the schools. So lots of different community connections.
Thank you. Next is outreach. Tell us about your interpersonal skills, especially being approachable, visible, collaborative, and experienced at drawing diverse communities into the conversation.
So my job as an MLL, multilingual learner specialist requires me to work with teachers. I work across all, I've worked across all three elementary schools. Right now I'm focused at two of the schools. I work with teachers. I work with families. I work with making connections for families into the communities. I work with the administration to help them understand ways that we can support our, our families and our students. I work with special ed teams also in supporting students. As well as the ways that things that happen in schools impact our students. So it's, I work with the PTOs. As someone who also teaches at the, I teach it, I, I teach a class at URI, beginning reading. I've just started that this semester. I also work with Roger Williams University and help as a learning guide and help teachers, certified teachers get their ESL certification. So there's a lot of ways that the things that I'm interested in or passionate about are reflected in the things that I do.
Thank you. Next is diversity. How might you provide an enhanced perspective experience considering underrepresented groups in the community and including factors such as race, national origin, sexual orientation, gender, gender identity, socioeconomic position, intellectual or physical ability or religion?
So I've been a community member for fifty-two, around fifty-two years. My birthday's coming up. It's going to be fifty-three. So I've lived in South Kingstown or Narragansett for most of, of my life. And as a person, an African-American woman who is also Jewish, there are lots of ways that my identity is othered by people. And so I'm very conscious about the way that I work in schools and I make sure that my work is, is centering children that are not always centered in schools. And as someone who works with families that are immigrants, are families that are new into the community, I am often aware of the ways that we can welcome them and the ways that we don't welcome them. And so, and the ways that I felt as a kid growing up in this community. So, you know, I started teaching in the community. This will, I'll be finishing my fifth year. The bulk of my teaching has been in Providence, but now that I'm in this community, I've seen a need for things to be different for certain kids. And I put my, my work into it. And when I'm not working, I've also put the things, the, my interests into helping kids in the community.
Okay, next is experience. What relevant professional and or life experience do you bring as it relates to the subcommittee you are applying for?
Well, I've served on the Policy Subcommittee for a couple of years. And actually, it's really, you know, I, I didn't realize how impactful it can be until I was actually seeing the policies and looking at the policies and the way that they can impact students. And I feel like my lens is not one of sometimes we get into, I think, being, feeling like an outsider and also being an outsider, not having worked in the school system for my whole career has allowed me to have, look at things in a way that not that's different from people that have worked in this community for many years and things are just done a certain way. So I feel like my experience, the experience that I can bring to the Policy Subcommittee is, is just that. That it's a, a lens that's not always used or been seen in schools. And I think I've done some great work sitting on the Policy Committee. We passed a lot of, we've updated a lot of policies from the seventies and eighties and nineties. And I think I feel very proud of that work and I'd love to be able to continue that. Which is really speaking to my motivation, which is the next question.
Brings us to the next one, motivation. What is your motivation or reason for seeking out the opportunity to be involved in the Subcommittee?
Yeah, that's really about, you know, my, my kids. So, you know, I was, I went to school for most of, I didn't, I went to school here for elementary and, and Narragansett from middle school and then ended up in Providence for high school. But my motivation really is to think about who I was as a kid and making sure that, that that little kid is seen in schools and represented and feels a piece of schools. And I wasn't, I was someone that didn't always feel like I was a piece of school and a, a, a part of the school, fully, fully a part of the school. I was seen as an outsider. And so really my motivation is to support kids that haven't always been seen in school and to think about the ways that curriculum, the ways that policies around rule following and, and, you know, just to have a lens that, that's not always traditionally seen at school. And so that's me. It's just a, I want to be able to support kids that aren't always.
Thank you. Thank you so much. All right, next, we'd like to have Jonathan Sigmund.
I meant fifteen for myself. That's what I meant. So hi, I'm Jonathan Sigmund. The seats, some people have changed seats up there since the last time I was in the room addressing you. And I'll just say thank you to some of you for your leadership in the past. And congratulations to the two of you. Well done. Okay, I'm ready.
Now, first, community connection. Tell us about your connection and involvement in the school community and the greater town community.
So my twenty-three-year-old son wants me to mention, hey Eli, that I coached his Little League team. Some eighteen-ish, nineteen-ish, eighteen, seventeen, sixteen, all of those years ago. I've, yes, but I don't know, I just, this job has actually provided me with so many opportunities to be connected in the town. You know, where I'll be going, I'm being shahs and a parent will tell me that they saw me zooming into their house, you know, during COVID or whatever, doing like a meditation thing or it's just, there's, there's a lot of really nice connection with the community. I'm very, I have been involved with school committee issues. I, when we had a referendum to cut funding to the schools, I was on the street with signs saying, no, thank you. And the same with getting the bond passed for the new high school. I've been living in SK for almost thirty years. We've raised our children here. We, through our, through mine and Michelle's involvement with the Racial and Social Justice Committee, we have created some amazing community events, like last year's Martin Luther King Day event. We had a, a community discussion on a racism movie where we screened the movie and then we had a community discussion. Some of the members were, were there. So we, we've done, we've done a lot to build community. And I was definitely a part of making those things happen. I was also have been a part in the last few years of what is now called SK Cares, which is a community group, really not related to the schools, but of community members who are interested in learning about racial and social justice issues and some advocacy. And, oh, I've sat on the sit team at Peaceville and I'm currently on the team in West Kingston. I advocated for the equity audit. And congratulations that, you know, it's pretty exciting that it's finally here. So well done. And I guess I'll stop there. Thank you. You should probably give me a time limit.
Outreach. Tell us about your interpersonal skills, specifically being approachable, visible, collaborative, and experienced at drawing diverse communities into the conversation.
I like to use humor. Talking to people is kind of my bread and butter and I definitely like chatting with people and working collaboratively. I try, I have a, I have a lot of ideas and sometimes I have a lot of urgency around my ideas and I try to shut up intentionally to draw other people in and let other people like step into the space. I have facilitated various mental health type groups, book club type groups, some discussion at that community discussion, the, the racism movie, that event. What else? I suppose, yeah. I'm, I'll, I'll stop there. Oh, yeah. Thanks.
Okay, diversity. How might you provide an enhanced perspective experience considering underrepresented groups in the community and including factors such as race, national origin, sexual orientation, gender identity, socioeconomic position, intellectual or physical ability or religion in comparison to members of the committee and other applicants?
I grew up in Los Angeles and I was raised in a modern Orthodox Jewish family. And so that meant I was wearing a yarmulke all day, every day and Orthodox Jewish schools and you know, shul synagogue every Saturday and youth groups and camps. Everything was Jewish. And so like Michelle, Michelle stated very well, there's this like sense of outsider-ness. And I certainly wouldn't claim to like speak for all the entire Jewish experience, but I have my own experience of this outsider-ness in this very Christian-dominated culture in, in the United States. So there's this, I, I think I have a, a good empathy for folks who consider them, who, who like, who are on the outside, I guess is what I'll say. You know, thank, thank goodness Jewish people are treated pretty well these days. So, and I have family, family members, many members of my extended community who are part of the LGBTQIA community. I certainly have a lot of experience with people struggling with mental health issues of various types. And actually, I've unfortunately had a lot of experience, even in my personal family, with people suffering with medical issues and medical disability. So I think all of that all of that combines and has contributed to my interest in supporting people, especially people who, who are suffering, who are under hardship, who have historically experienced hardship or oppression. So that's my story.
Thank you. Experience. What relevant professional and or life experience do you bring as it relates to the Subcommittee you are applying for?
Well, I've been a social worker in South Kingstown schools and in a couple other school districts for even longer than that, but for twenty years in SK. So I really just, you know, like, like, like other people who have applied, I, I have a lot of experience with school policies, with implementation, with how, how the policy is written translates into how a child experiences their day at school or whatever. So, so yeah, so it's, I have, I have, I think, a lot of experience. It's So, um, so yeah, so it's, I have, I have, I think a lot of experience, it's extremely relevant. In addition to, um, uh, some experience last year on this particular subcommittee, the policy subcommittee. So, which I found I was happy to have that opportunity. So that's my experience.
Very good. And lastly, motivation. What is your motivation reason for seeking out the opportunity to be involved in the subcommittee?
Um, really just, uh, supporting kids. I definitely have an eye for the underdog, you know, the kids who might come from certain populations that are more marginalized or more, or underrepresented. But, but for all kids, I definitely have a strong justice and equity orientation. Um, I want kids to feel safe in school and I mean that physically. And I very much also mean that emotionally and I want them to feel a sense of belonging. So these are the things that motivate me to want to be, um, involved in a community work like this. I see discipline as a learning tool and it definitely has a place. But that this is, this is where I, where I am, where I arrive at this committee. And that definitely impacts my participation, um, my prioritize social emotional learning, you know? Yeah. So that's, uh, that's what I have to say.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Nice to see you.
All right. So next, uh, we have Brianne Sheng.
Hello.
Welcome.
Thank you. Pull it down. There we go. I'm Brianne Sheng. I'll hold off on my introduction because that goes into my first question response, but I live in Mattoonik.
Okay, so, um, community connection. Tell us about your connection and involvement in the school community and greater town community.
Okay, I am a parent of a high school student, so I was recognizing faces over there, but there we go. That's why you look familiar. Uh, my daughter Tegan is a sophomore at South Kingston High School and she's involved in theater. And she's in the chorus and she's an athlete. Um, a long time visitor of Mattoonik. My family had a summer home here, so been coming here for over forty years. Um, in the pandemic, following the pandemic, we moved to Mattoonik full-time. So in evaluating the connection part of the rubric, I initially thought, you know, I'm gonna fall apart when, uh, they talk to me about this. But considering it more, I don't have a bias in the community. So I don't have embedded social circles that I have been a part of for twenty years. The community is why we chose to stay. So we're active participants of the YMCA. We go to performances at URI and, um, I, I look at this community and I want to be more involved. So I'm interested in growing that capacity.
Outreach, tell us about your interpersonal skills, specifically being approachable, visible, collaborative, and experienced at drawing diverse communities into the conversation.
Okay, so this is what I do professionally. Um, I work in education in Connecticut and in New Jersey. In Connecticut specifically, I work for an alternate routes certification program. And our program, it's an interesting time to talk about the work that I do. Um, but the program that I run, um, is interested in breaking down barriers for people that want to enter the field of education. So less people look like me standing in front of their students and they look like the students that they represent. So in that program, I'm an adjunct instructor. I'm also a program coach and I work with an organization in New Jersey called the Teachers Apprenticeship Network. And we're currently working with the State Department of New Jersey and Department of Labor to do a similar program there. So in that work that I do on a daily basis, as an educational coach, I listen, I analyze, building relationships, making myself available and approachable to the superintendents, the principals, the teachers, the families, the students, the legislators that I'm working with. Um, and I specifically work with those from marginalized populations. So I am working every day to break down barriers, to be cognizant of my own bias and bring in a voice that is often left out of the narrative in spaces like this.
Diversity. How might you provide an enhanced perspective experience considering underrepresented groups in the community and including factors such as race, national origin, sexual orientation, gender identity, socioeconomic position, intellectual or physical ability or religion in comparison to members of the committee and other applicants?
I think this question is, uh, more important than ever in the time that we are entering. Um, I do think in the definition that you have there, it could be expanded and more beneficial if you included multilingual learners into your diversity because I think that's a growing capacity of students that are entering your schools. Uh, but to answer the question, my work is focused on bringing the silent and underrepresented voices into the space. It's an area of my present dissertation defense, uh, where I'm analyzing teachers of color and the impact of their support or often lack of support in a traditionally white space. I'm an adjunct instructor and the work that, um, I teach in most of my courses is multiculturalism, um, family representation, multilingual learner courses. Um, I provide professional development and district coaching in support, uh, for conversations specifically around race in the field of education. And my own personal philosophy is equity-driven. And I'm constantly seeking, whether it's volunteer work or professional work, to eliminate barriers for those that are from underrepresented and marginalized communities.
Uh, next is experience. What relevant professional and or life experience do you bring as it relates to the, to the subcommittee you are applying for?
So I, I'm applying for, um, planning and there were two, but there we go, policy and. Um, so I have a bachelor's degree in psychology, a master's in education, a sixth year in educational leadership and I'm presently, hopefully entering the defense mode of my dissertation very quickly. Um, I'm a certified K through six educator in the state of Connecticut. I'm also a certified administrator. I have experienced planning and implementing policy for educator preparation programs in the state of Connecticut. I taught, uh, for about seventeen years in Westport, Connecticut. And there I served as a union representative. I was on several curriculum committees, building committees. Presently working with the New Jersey Department of Education, drafting policy, um, with them and the Department of Labor for educator prep programs in the state of New Jersey. In addition, I planned and implemented a K through seven summer program in Westport, Connecticut that I still plan and run every summer. And the goal of that program is to prevent academic slide and to serve the Greater Fairfield County Connecticut region. So I'm, I'm looking forward to bringing all of that here in small increments and, and getting involved.
And lastly, we have motivation. What is your motivation reason for seeking out the opportunity to be involved in the subcommittee?
My motivation is, is twofold. Um, so on a surface professional level, I look forward to bringing like an unbiased perspective. That is multifaceted and brings in all community members to the decisions that the school board is making. And hopefully having meetings where there is a, an auditorium full of people that feel that their voices are valued and heard and they feel like this is a safe space. And the second facet of my motivation is my daughter. Um, so we moved here right after the pandemic and it was very much, uh, we are going back to Connecticut, we're going back to Westport. School system there is phenomenal. I was doing my doctorate at Columbia University at the time. Had a fantastic position. And, you know, my, my partner is in the audience, so I always said, we are, we're going back to the metro New York area. And the reason we're here is the schools. Because my daughter found a space that she would have not found there, like the academics in Westport are, you know, untouchable and unmeasurable, but the community that the teachers provided, she would not have found there. So motivation is, is getting involved in that and really refining the work that you're doing to be more clear in policy and program. Because I think what the teachers have in their social emotional capacity and their, you know, what, what the budget allows for, the curriculum that they have, everything that your teachers have in your district, you can't teach to teachers. It's innate. All of the other stuff, the, the policy and the programming, you get really smart people together, you can do that well. So I'm hoping to streamline that and, and help to give back on that end.
Thank you so much.
It's hard being on this side.
Just want to say we do appreciate everyone taking their time to do this and their willingness to get up there and speak.
Katiri Collins.
Welcome.
Hi.
Thank you.
All right, the first question, community connection.
Oh, I'm sorry. Did I, was I supposed to introduce myself? Um, my name is Katiri Collins and yeah, I live in Wakefield, so now I will answer the first question.
Thank you. All right, tell us about your connection and involvement in the school community and the greater town community.
Okay, um, so I've lived in South Kingston for fifteen years. Um, I have three children, all of whom have gone through the school system. One, my youngest is a senior at the high school. I have served on the bike and pedestrian town committee. I served on that for five years. I've served, I would, I have served on the policy subcommittee for the last, I think, two or three years. Um, and then I was active in the schools throughout my children's, um, school years, especially elementary, either in PTO or subbing or volunteering in schools.
All right, outreach. Tell us about your interpersonal skills, specifically being approachable, visible, collaborative, and experienced at drawing diverse communities into the conversation.
Well, I, I was an English major, so I love to analyze the written word. So I think that has served me well on the policy subcommittee because, um, I, I think I pick apart, um, language and ask a lot of questions sometimes. Um, maybe a little, a few too many questions, but, um, uh, I like to think that I'm a good listener. I, I enjoy hearing from each person, meeting people in the eye. I don't know, I just, I'm a general, I just love getting out and, um, experiencing the community and connecting with people. I, I try to understand everybody's perspective. And know that pretty much any issue is, is nuanced, so we have to kind of tease it apart. And especially in, in these days, stick to the facts, but know that, you know, it's important to consider all sides.
All right, thank you. Uh, diversity. How might you provide an enhanced perspective experience considering underrepresented groups in the community and including factors such as race, national origin, sexual orientation, gender identity, socioeconomic position, intellectual or physical ability or religion in comparison to members of the community and other applicants?
One of my most formative experiences was when I was just out of college or just finished my teaching certification and I worked at a Head Start in Moon Socket. And I just am forever grateful that I had that experience because it really opened my eyes to just, the obstacles that people are confronting. And just, um, you know, I grew up in a small town in Massachusetts and I didn't, it wasn't diverse at all. And that just opened my eyes to, um, different people's struggles that these parents are all trying their best and working hard to educate their kids. And the things that were thrown in their way. So that kind of, it made a huge impression on me. Um, and then I, for a couple of years, I worked in the Providence Public Libraries in a, um, it was called the Rhode Island Family Initiative, Literacy Initiative. And that was, um, immigrant family, families whose language, their second language was English or their third or fourth language was English. Um, and this was a program educating the parents and also the families. So I would work with the children and work on, um, school, parent, um, communication issues and, and just be a basic support. So again, that greater opened my eyes to, um, the difficulties that some families would face in communication or understanding what was going on and just greater accessibility to the school experience for those families. Um, I'm also, uh, parent of a dyslexic child and that has just been, um, I don't know, I guess it just has made me more compassionate towards different learning styles. Um, last year I just completed a, um, dyslexic training, um, program. So now I'm a certified dyslexic practitioner and I tutor in the community and I'm able to uh, connect with these parents and it's been really special to talk to parents and, and know absolutely where they're coming from. And just, just relate to their feelings and the, um, emotion that goes with, um, having a student who just learns to, you know, who, who has struggles, but is chugging along, so. I guess that's all. That's my answer on that one.
Um, experience. What relevant professional and or life experience do you bring as it relates to the subcommittee you are applying for?
Okay, so I have sat on the, the, the policy subcommittee for, um, I can't remember if it's been two or three years. I have my early childhood certification and have been a preschool teacher. Um, I've worked as a teaching assistant and a substitute in almost all the schools in South Kingston. And I And I, I think that that the editor in me comes out and just reading the policy and be a, being able to take in information and kind of ask the questions and kind of tease apart what's being said on paper.
All right. And last motivation. What is your, your motivation reason for seeking out the opportunity to be involved in the subcommittee?
Pretty much my whole adult life has been like children. Children are my passion. And I just, it, it's, it's so crucial that their years, they spend so much of their childhood in school. And so it's just so crucial to me that it's a safe place, obviously physically, but I think more importantly, just emotionally that they come and as other people have been saying that they're seen, they feel like they're seen. And certain things in the policy, certain policies have come up and there's been questions that maybe not the majority that, that reveal issues that might not affect the majority of, um, South Kingstown residents, but we like that, there's this, there's some people that they don't have a car, you know, just things like that, that I think have bubbled to the surface. And I think those of us who have been on it have done a good job about asking those questions and having those things bubble to the surface. And that's really my, my prime motivation is just to make sure that the families who might not have a voice or who might feel intimidated. You know, this, even this process, I think like, gosh, to, to, to invite as many people as we can from this community to serve on these committees. This is an intimidating process. And I know that it's probably required, but I think to really spread the pool of applicants and get those different voices, we might consider having something different than getting up and speaking like this. Um, but anyways, that is my motivation to make sure that everybody's involved and the voices are heard. So thank you for your time. And thank you for your service. I really appreciate it.
Thank you. And thank you for applying for, to be on a subcommittee. We appreciate it. Okay. We'd like to have, uh, Jeanette Rodriguez, please. Welcome.
So my name is Jeanette Rodriguez and I live in Wakefield. And I'm a writer and I was worried about being too nervous. So I wrote all my responses, which I will give you and they're just as sincere as anything else because I was picturing all of you when I was writing.
Oh, good. Okay. Community connection. Tell us about your connection, involvement in the school community and the greater town community.
As a member of the beloved community advisory board to the South Kingstown School District since the fall of 2020, I was one of several people who helped to craft the anti racism, anti discrimination, anti harassment policy. And in December, 2021, I helped organize community people to testify in favor of that policy at the school committee hearing. Since that time, those of us who drafted and got the policy passed have continued to advocate for implementation of its multi-pronged approach, such as the equity audit. Thank you. I have been an active member of the Unitarian Universalist Congregation of South County since 2012. And in addition to periodically inviting guest speakers from the community to give a talk at the services, I was also the production manager organizer of a monthly coffee house from 2017 to 2020. Music and more at Lilypads, which definitely drew in the South Kingstown community. In January, 2023 and in 2024, I was instrumental in bringing the Rhode Island Black Storytellers Fund Fest to South Kingstown. With nationally famous storytellers performing at the South Kingstown High School for an evening of historical characters brought to life, spoken word, poetry, drumming, and stories from around the world. This year, the Funda Fest event was an afternoon for families with crafts and storytelling by the Black Rhode Island Black storytellers held at the Unitarian Universalist Congregation of South County. I also was one of the people interviewed for the PBS series, Our Town, South Kingstown. And I've published features in the South County Independent since 2004, which brings information and perhaps enlightenment to South Kingstown community members.
Okay. Second is outreach. Tell us about your interpersonal skills, specifically being approachable, visible, collaborative, and experienced at drawing diverse communities into the conversation.
As often happens, these questions overlap each other. So in addition to the outreach to diverse populations that I mentioned above, I have been a responsible communicator to the beloved community advisory board, keeping members updated on policies and plans at the South Kingstown School Department. I've been visible and approachable and collaborative in many other ways since living in South Kingstown. Serving on the town's women's commission, serving on the policy and planning subcommittees since the fall of 2020. Attending town council and school committee meetings when a topic or a policy of interest was on the agenda. And speaking up about it when I was moved to do so.
Diversity. How might you provide an enhanced perspective experience considering underrepresented groups in the community and including factors such as race, national origin, sexual orientation, gender identity, socioeconomic position, intellectual or physical ability, or religion in comparison to members of the community or other applicants?
Although it's been many years since my daughter and my godchildren win the South Kingstown system, it's impossible to forget the racism and discrimination that each one of them endured. When I hear of instances of this still occurring at South Kingstown, it's disappointing and dispiriting. But it adds a strong layer of perspective and experience to my planning, listening and decision-making that are important requisites for the policy and planning subcommittee.
Experience. What relevant professional and or life experience do you bring as it relates to the subcommittee you are applying for?
I've been a journalist for 40 years and that relates not only to writing carefully, but also to listening carefully and organizing facts and thoughts into a coherent article. It also involves an inherent curiosity about people and their communities. I was a paid community organizer for six and a half years for a statewide grant-supported organization called the Coalition for Consumer Justice. Then I became the executive director of the Rhode Island Women's Health Collective for four years. And later the development director at East Bay Community Action for three and a half years. All of those locations brought me into contact with many different people, including groundbreaking writers and activists as a journalist. But for the last three jobs, I also met and worked with a wide range of people from different ethnic and racial backgrounds, ages, economics, situations, faith traditions, abilities, sexual orientations and gender identities.
And lastly, motivation. What is your motivation reason for seeking out the opportunity to be involved in this subcommittee?
My hope and my belief is that this particular subcommittee, to quote Hamilton, gets the job done. We consider it carefully and make careful decisions. We respect each other's opinions and work hard to reach a measured outcome for each policy that we read, revise and update. The background I've given above reflects my commitment to this upcoming.
Thank you so much. Next, we have strategic planning. Let's wait a few minutes for Paula. Okay. So next we're going to have the strategic planning. And we'll start with Laura Urban. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Laura Urban.
Hi, welcome. Okay. Um, community connection. Tell us about your connection and involvement in the school community and greater town community.
Sure. Thanks. I'm a resident of Kingston. I have two children at West Kingston and Monty. My oldest has been a student for five years. I've been a member of our school improvement team for the past two years. Many of you will know that I have a history of speaking up at town meetings and writing letters to them independent on behalf of the schools. And I contribute locally to Kingston Improvement and other, other efforts in town.
All right. Outreach. Tell us about your interpersonal skills, specifically being approachable, visible, collaborative, and experienced at drawing diverse communities into the conversation.
Sure. I do make an effort to be visible, approachable and collaborative and to actively listen to diverse perspectives because they're essential to improving and sustaining outcomes. Um, I am outcomes driven, so I am known for being direct and focused, um, especially on the question, you know, what are we solving for? But I, I really recognize that viable solutions depend on, on all of us and who's engaged in the conversation.
Diversity. How might you provide an enhanced perspective experience considering underrepresented groups in the community and including factors such as race, national origin, sexual orientation, gender identity, socioeconomic position, intellectual or physical ability, or religion in comparison to members of the committee or other applicants?
Um, my personal identities, for the most part, do not appear to be underrepresented here. I do have friends and family with identities specific to each of the factors in this rubric. So I'm bringing those personal connections and empathy that comes with those. I wouldn't claim to speak directly for them. I'd also note that I'm a scientist and I'm not, I don't work in education and it does seem like there's a heavy emphasis among applicants on, um, on, on those types of roles. So I do represent a different perspective that way.
Wonderful. All right. Experience. What relevant professional and or life experience do you bring as it relates to the subcommittee you are applying for?
Sure. Um, I'm a PhD scientist. I've, uh, lived and worked in many parts of the country and world, pursuing my education and higher degrees in STEM. Um, my, I worked for the federal government on reducing water pollution. So that involves steering large groups of both internal and external stakeholders, often with conflicting interests towards better outcomes at a societal level. I see our town as a society and the district as a key component. So the strategic and planning, the strategic planning that I engage in at a national scale on environmental goals, I see as having very much transferable lessons for this context.
And lastly, motivation. What is your motivation reason for seeking out the opportunity to be involved in the subcommittee?
Well, I heard the call for help. I honestly wasn't looking for more things to do, but public education is a core value for me. And I feel a responsibility to it to support a stronger district that attracts and retains our students, that supports them, that values them. And that prepares them for, for being adults. Um, and so I, strategic planning appeals to me as a subcommittee as it sets the high level direction from which other elements flow.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Okay. Um, next up is Josh Smith. Welcome.
How's it going?
I'm good. Thanks. Community connection. Tell us, tell us about your connection and involvement in the school community and greater town community.
All right. Um, so Josh Smith, I've been here for like 15 years in SK, I think. Work at URI, I've been there for 20, worked for the College of Education at URI. So I chipped through his PhD program 20 years ago. Oh, the mic, yes. Um, I was on a subcommittee a couple of years ago when the middle schools were consolidated with Um, I was on a subcommittee a couple of years ago when the middle schools were consolidated with a few of you. I recognize a few of you there. Um, we worked on consolidating the, uh, the two schools into one. I've served on a committee in Walworth to do that as well. Um, and I ran a middle-level extension program for the South Kingston teachers when that consolidation happened. A lot of people were going to lose their jobs. So I met with Mark Prince at the time and, uh, started a middle-level extension program out of URI to, uh, save some jobs and get people extended to be able to teach when the, uh, fifth grade went back to elementary and such, so.
Outreach. Tell us about your interpersonal skills, specifically being approachable, visible, collaborative, and experienced at drawing diverse communities into the conversation.
Yeah, so, um, I've taught as an adjunct at URI for fifteen years. I teach very large sections uh, in the business department and in the education department. I am a certified, certified seventh through twelve social studies teacher. Did a master's in education, taught, taught education courses for about a decade and then did my MBA and started teaching business courses at URI. I'm just coming off of teaching a hundred and thirty students about an hour ago. So they're pretty diverse. Um, I have, um, I really push, uh, perspective over perception. There's a big body of literature coming out now on, you know, focusing on perception. I mean, everyone focusing on perception rather than on perspective, and I think we need to shift our, our kind of thought process more to, uh, perspective rather than perception. And so, uh, I just lectured on that today. And yeah, so I, I think I'm drawing, you know, URI is a very diverse community. We value diversity. Obviously, we're a pillar of diversity in the state, um, and I stand behind it, so.
Uh, which leads us to the next session, which is diversity. A lot of these do overlap.
Yeah, I noticed. Uh, I taught, I taught, uh, teach, I taught English to second language learners in Providence in the early two thousands at Mount Pleasant High School. Um, I've taught at Providence in the early two thousands at Mount Pleasant High School, K-12 population. Taught at Daring and West Walworth and a few other districts, um, while I was finishing up degrees at URI. The two classes that I teach are diversity, equity, inclusion classes. Um, they meet the diversity, equity, inclusion janitor at URI, so they're both heavily focused on diversity, equity, inclusion, conflict resolution skills. Um, I work with a lot of different programs at URI in the education field that cater towards minority populations. I actually support, uh, my students who are minorities, try to get them to graduation.
All right, experience. What relevant professional and or life experience do you bring as it relates to the subcommittee you are applying for?
Yeah, sure. So the University of Rhode Island, uh, recently established the College of Education. We were, uh, a human science services and they were a different college with a Providence campus. I've been there now for twenty years, so I was involved in a lot of work with, you know, consolidating it down to a college of education. Um, I work with RIDE heavily. Most of the people, uh, I work with at RIDE have retired. There's only a couple left up there, but, uh, very involved with RIDE and ed policy with RIDE, uh, involved with, uh, as you all probably know, teacher preparation programs have to go through a pretty rigorous national accreditation and RIDE program approval, which I, I lead, and so that's what I'll be working on this break. We have a RIDE program, a visit coming.
And lastly, motivation. What is your motivation reason for seeking out the opportunity to be involved in this subcommittee?
Uh, I got four kids in the district. That should be enough, but, uh, um, I mean, strategic planning is, it, it can turn into a committee that gets nothing done unless the planning that is talked about is accomplishable, right? Strategic planning is really top-down. It's very big picture. But you have to have somebody grounded in what's, what can be accomplished versus, you know, things that are discussed that can't be, that can't happen. So I'm a very grounded person. Like, I'm very, I'm a person who really sticks to reality and what, what can actually occur, what can actually be accomplished versus pie in the sky things that, you know, we might not have the money for, we might not have the drive for. So I'm really motivated in like making, uh, an impact on this committee where, where we talk about things that can actually get done. That's like the MBA side of me. It's like, we can talk a lot of, about things, but can they get done? You know, can they get funded? Can they get approval from different bodies? Can they, you know, would the teachers be behind it, that kind of thing? And four kids, Texas.
Thank you so much. Okay, that will bring us to the wellness committee. Katie Garvin.
They did want to be able to cheat, but it's okay. Well, hi.
Hi, guys. How is everybody?
All right, community connection. Tell us about your connection and involvement in the school community and the greater town community.
Sure, uh, my name's Katie Garvin. I have three children in the school community. My son's at Broad Rock and my two girls are at West Kingston. Um, I've been involved since my son started in kindergarten. That's when we moved, um, to South Kingston very intentionally, um, choosing South Kingston when we were moving back from living out west for a couple of years. Um, since then, I ran the PTO at Peacetail for a number of years. I was on the board of the PTO, of the PTO at West Kingston for a couple of years, and now I run the PTO board, um, at Broad Rock. Um, I pretty much try to volunteer for anything that comes up in the schools that I feel like I might be able to lend a perspective to. I've been on a couple of these different subcommittees and, um, you're all just too fun, so I just keep coming back. Um, try to volunteer for as many other things in the community as well. We're, you know, fairly involved in helping volunteer with youth pride and various other, um, events that come up throughout the year in the community.
Outreach. Tell us about your interpersonal skills, specifically being approachable, visible, collaborative, and experienced at drawing diverse communities into the conversation.
Sure, yeah, um, I am a very community-minded person. I really like to be out in the community, meeting new people, meeting different people, um, making the connections of where are people, you know, maybe where are their kids in school, or where have their kids been in school, or what are their experiences? Um, I get really excited to meet new people and chat with new people, so trying to draw people in. Sometimes I get that look from people when I'm first meeting them because they're, I think they think I'm going to suck them into the PTO. Um, but usually, we obviously try not to do that, um, unless people want to. Um, pretty much just trying to, we're not from here, so we're often just kind of trying to figure out like bigger elements like of the, you know, kind of the vibe of the community and just trying to be active members, um, since we obviously chose to be here.
Thanks, uh, diversity. How might you provide an enhanced perspective experience considering underrepresented groups in the community and including factors such as race, national origin, sexual orientation, gender identity, socioeconomic position, intellectual or physical ability, or religion in comparison to members of the committee or other applicants?
Sure, um, so as some of the other applicants have said, I certainly can't speak to a number of the elements within your rubric. Um, some that I hopefully can lend a perspective to. Um, like I said, I'm not from Rhode Island. I grew up in an incredibly low socioeconomic area in very northern New York, about fifteen minutes from the Canadian border. Um, so I have a very strong understanding of a lot of elements of why we need public education, why we need it to be strong, why we need people who are able to volunteer and do what they can to try to keep the schools vibrant for all of our kids. Um, that was a huge element of my upbringing and something that I started paying attention to when I was young and in high school. Um, from the LGBTQIA+ perspective, I do work as a professional school counselor at a K through eight school. So that is something that I spend a lot of time working with a diverse population of students, um, as well as their families. Um, and, and my son's in middle school now. Uh, we do spend a fair bit of time talking about the things that go on within the schools, uh, the type of language that's still used, the type of treatment that some of our students are still, still sustaining on the regular. Um, I try to be really current in things of that nature through the Rhode Island as well as the American School Counselor Association. We have a lot of work to do, you know, as a, as a nation in a lot of these areas of diversity. Um, but certainly things that can happen on a smaller level within our schools. Um, all of our students are not having the same experience based on areas, um, that they may identify with, and it's just something that I think is really important. And I think wellness committee in particular can be something that can be looking at the, the mental health of all of our students. And, and that is an area where many of our most vulnerable students fall into one of those categories that you mentioned in this rubric.
Next is experience. What relevant professional and or life experience do you bring as it relates to the subcommittee you are applying for?
Sure, so, um, before working, um, I, like I said, I work as a K through eight, um, school counselor at a statewide charter school now. Um, I was home with my kids for a number of years before that, but I worked as a K through six school counselor in Massachusetts for seven years before we moved to Rhode Island. Um, so, mental health and just overall wellness of humans is something I've taken very seriously for a really long time. I was a psychology major in college. I have a master's in education specifically for school counseling, uh, kind of taking the school as a place where we need our kids to be safe and we need them to be happy and we need them to be healthy. And we really need to meet all of those needs from a variety of angles, whether it's getting them outside into fresh air, and making sure they're getting clean food, making sure they're getting movement, all of those elements. Um, we need to provide those at our schools because we don't have the luxury of saying that every single kid is having every single one of those boxes checked at home. Um, and even if they are having those boxes checked at home, we need to be modeling that type of behavior so that we can be having kids ready to launch into the world, knowing how to take care of themselves and hopefully take care of a family someday. So my professional experience is really enthusiastic towards helping kids look at what do you want to be in ten years, twenty years, and, and how does that relate to what you need to do now? And a lot of the things that we would look at in a wellness-type committee are how are we making sure we're like actually setting our kids up to be healthy? Um, and, you know, we're doing a lot of great things and we could be doing some more things as well, so.
And last, motivation. What is your motivation reason for seeking out the opportunity to be involved in this, in this subcommittee?
Sure, um, so I would be remiss if I wasn't being super honest in saying that if I'm on this committee, I'm going to really hope we're going to be talking about getting some of these older kids some fresh air during the school day. Just going to throw that out there right now. Um, I'm very motivated by some elements of trends that we're seeing, you know, nationally around too much screen time and what is it doing to these kids' brains? What is it doing to their mental health? What are we able to do in the schools to try to balance that out? And are we doing enough when they're in their school setting to actually try to make some impact there? So my motivation is that some of the things that we've been trying more at the parent and PTO level have not necessarily been particularly fruitful, so, um, kind of just trying to put my time where my mouth is, I guess, and see if we might be able to move the needle a little bit on a couple of things. Full transparency, so now you can all be like, no, thank you. I would understand.
Thank you so much, Katie. All right, last but certainly not least, Lauren Weinstein. Welcome, Lauren.
Thank you. Good evening. The last name like Weinstein, I'm always the last to go. All offense, so this is very familiar space for me.
I, I know that feeling. All right, community connection. Tell us about your connection and involvement in the school community and greater town community.
Sure, so, um, I think many of you know me. I, um, have been a resident of South Kingston for sixteen years now. I have, um, two children and two stepchildren between the ages of thirteen and eighteen years old. Very busy household. All four have been in the SK schools at some time or another. Three are currently still in SK schools. So, um, have a really deep awareness of what's happening in the schools through the kids, through my involvement. I have, um, always been a vocal advocate for many issues that have been close to me over the years. Um, and, uh, especially in the wellness space. So I've participated in wellness committee meetings. I've presented on topics relevant to wellness in the committee as a clinical psychologist and professor of psychiatry at Brown University. I have, um, previously, uh, served as an appointed member of the SK Partnership for Prevention. And, um, when the grant funding for that ended, rolled into the SK Wellness nonprofit that, um, operated for a couple of years. After that, um, unfortunately was not really sustainable long-term, but, um, really proud of the work that we did as part of SK Wellness. I, um, made a particular contribution a couple of years ago now when RIDE mandated that all school districts establish suicide prevention policies in the district. Suicide prevention is my particular area of expertise. Um, I've been involved nationally and internationally in several suicide prevention initiatives. My research is focused on suicide prevention. So I was invited and consulted with the policy subcommittee on the language that was involved in that, um, particular policy. The first draft, um, needed quite a bit of improvement and sharpening of language. And I, um, am proud to have been able to help craft that. And my understanding is that that has served as a model for other school districts in the state as well since then.
Outreach. Tell us about your interpersonal skills, specifically being approachable, visible, collaborative, and experienced at drawing diverse communities into the conversation.
So I'm a pretty outgoing person. Being a friendly person is very important to me. I think we can do a lot to lead with friendliness and welcoming of other people. I, um, don't know if it's, it's like a chicken and egg kind of thing, right? I don't know if I'm a psychologist because I'm curious and interested in people or if my curiosity and interest in people has really grown as a function of my training and experience as a psychologist. But, um, I, um, very interested in people, getting to know them. I, um, find it very easy to talk with and listen to people, sometimes to my family's detriment because, um, I'll often find myself in conversations with strangers, um, finding ways of connection. Um, even this evening, the woman that I'm sitting near, we were able to form a connection on something we shared in common. So, um, I, that's another thing that's really important to me is, is making those connections with people and finding those points of connection. And also, um, in spaces recognizing who's not in the conversation, who's not there, and also trying to think about ways to either invite those people into the conversation or if they're there but quiet, find ways to bring them out of their shells. Because I recognize that not everyone is as outgoing and extroverted in certain situations.
Diversity. How might you provide an enhanced perspective experience consider, considering underrepresented groups in the community and including factors such as race, national origin, sexual orientation, gender identity, socioeconomic position, intellectual or physical ability, or religion in comparison to members of the community and other applicants?
I think this is such an interesting question and very timely. I, when I think about, like, generally my approach to diversity and even prior to recent events that have been happening in the world, I, I take a step back and I really think that diversity, like a diverse perspective is around empathy and putting yourself in the shoes of another person and trying to understand that their perspective might be different than yours or their lived experiences might be different from yours. And so when we're making decisions, um, or setting policies that affect lots of people, it's important to consider what those different perspectives are. that affect lots of people, it's important to consider what those different perspectives are. And so just having an awareness of who people are and where they're coming from, whether it, you know, and all of those different identities that you listed, I think is important. I, you know, for myself personally, I'm very interesting because I grew up in a community that was roughly 40 to 50% Jewish. And now I'm raising my children in a community where we're about 1% Jewish. So it's fascinating to connect and see other Jewish people here this evening. So I do have that perspective of my personal and very relatable perspective that others shared tonight around feelings of otherness and having decisions and policies made. Even here in our school district that have to me sometimes felt like they haven't been fully considerate of our perspectives as Jewish families. And I was very vocal at times in the past, like many years in the past, about some of those decisions. But I can't, again, like many other people, I can't speak to other perspectives that I have not had personal experience with, other than to try to understand and again, attempt to put myself in the shoes of other people to understand what they may need and how that may be different from myself, but also from other people.
Experience. What relevant professional and or life experience do you bring as it relates to the subcommittee you are applying for?
I mean, quite frankly, wellness is part of my job every day. Being a psychologist is a very important part of my identity. I would say as well, I'm a very enthusiastic psychologist. Not only am I trained as a clinician, but I'm a clinician researcher. My research addresses topics that relate to people who are at the highest risk for a lot of really scary outcomes related to mental health. And I really try to identify questions that have real world implications, if that makes sense. So I don't want my research to be unattainable or, or yeah, I want it to be applicable to real world experiences. And so my research becomes part of my the way I relate to people in the world. And I don't know, I'm speaking, I'm tired a little bit sick. But I, you know, mental health is a very important issue right now amongst our youth. It's something I have a lot of background in. And I feel is really important to be part of the dialogue at the Wellness Committee right now.
All right. And last is motivation. What is your motivation reason for seeking out this opportunity to be involved in this subcommittee?
Well, I think I may have just answered that, but you know, ultimately, I think, you know, wellness is multifaceted. And mental health is an important component of that. But when we think, taking a step back in terms of things like feelings, thoughts, behaviors, all of these are kind of like key components of my job as a psychologist. All of that relates to every aspect of wellness, right? Whether we're talking about nutrition, or we're talking about substances, or we're talking about mental health, or we're talking about physical health, or just general well-being for people. I think it's really important that we, we really place this front and center for our kids and for the the teachers and staff in our schools as well, for that matter. Also, in full disclosure and transparency, I've been coming to the school committee for over a decade now advocating for preservation of our children's sleep. I think if we want to really make an impact on the mental health of our kids, we need to find a way to protect their sleep. The connection between sleep and emotions is so strong. And waking up in the dark every day and getting on buses in the dark and arriving at school as the sun is rising, when our children biologically are not at their most alert is, I, in my opinion, an area that we really need to do better by. We need to do better by our kids. And that is an area that's important to me and I think should be addressed in the Wellness Committee.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Carol, I'm sure you're going to explain it, but as folks are getting ready to leave, can you set an expectation as far as when we'll know who's appointed and who's not as they get ready to head out?
So I just want to have one conversation quickly. So for budget for and strategic planning and wellness, we had and we didn't have more applied than we have room on the subcommittee, so we can't accept all of those who applied. The only one we have to actually choose among would be policy. But the caveat is the people that couldn't be here tonight. We could accept them with the invitation that they would later accept or with an invitation to come back and have an interview, but we could accept them tonight since we've, we've closed putting your name in. That's kind of what I would like to do. And then we could have a discussion amongst the people in policy. And we do have the scores from the rubric, but if that's acceptable.
I think just
I, oh. I would just say that we went through the process. And now we're here. And this is a process that we need to conclude so we can get to the business of these committees, because right now, why we're going through this process, no committee has met except for our most important ones. And I think that's budget. We just administrated members. So if that is, I hope that's the consensus here tonight is that we just move forward.
I, I agree. Any delay just means our subcommittees aren't meeting. So so this is who we have for for each of the committees. So for budget, it would be Nicole Cordes, Elizabeth Messier, and Tim McGrath. Elizabeth and Tim were not able to make it, so we would have to have them come back, but we could appoint them to the the subcommittee now in anticipation of not delaying it any longer. For strategic planning, it would be Andrew Holt, Laura Urban, and Josh Smith. And for wellness, it would be Katie Garvin and Lauren Weinstein.
Can I just? I feel like it sort of sets a bad precedent to ask people to come and do something that many of them said they were uncomfortable doing. And then appoint people who, I mean, I'm sure just couldn't be here because we didn't give them a ton of notice to be here. So I think my I'd suggest maybe doing something in the middle where we appoint the people who could be here and who we have room for on the committee. And inform the others, they're welcome. Anyone is welcome to attend a meeting. Right? Anyone is welcome to attend all the meetings. We'll make sure they're informed. But until they come back and go through the same process, they wouldn't officially be appointed and we can make those appointments at our next meeting. So we because the, the, the committees can meet with, say, one representative from the public. It's not, we're not prohibited from doing that. I just worry that it creates this sort of two-tiered system of people who, who went out of their way and did something very uncomfortable. And then some folks who probably through no fault of their own, just pre-existing conflicts couldn't be here, but should I think go through the same process. Or we should change the process, but.
And, and I do agree that they need to come and interview before us. So we could do that at our next meeting in two weeks, but appoint everybody else that was here tonight.
Yeah, I'd be in favor of that as well. Just appoint the members who are here and able to make it. We can leave those seats open provisionally until the, the, those folks come and speak to us and we can be comfortable. Because we want to be comfortable that we're seeing them on our committee. Because we get, obviously, we have ultimate choice on who goes on our subcommittee. So we want to make sure that we know who these people are. I don't, I don't know everyone on this list.
Just a, and then a question. What's, is there a maximum number? I know policy, we had more than we had room for, but what is the maximum number? Or do we have, do we have that defined?
It's, it's decided on a subcommittee by subcommittee basis. So when the subcommittees met between December and now, or a few weeks ago, I guess. The, each committee should have decided how many community members they wanted to seat. And I think it was somewhat variable in some of the committees, but I know policy was four. I don't know the numbers of the others.
Policy, it seems like is the only one where we're above that, whatever the numbers were.
But everybody who put their name in for policy was here and, and spoke in front of us. So, but I guess my question is, the expectation is, will they know tonight, or are they going to get an email?
I, I think we will of the people here that interviewed will know tonight. Because, and the others will have to wait until they can come in two weeks. Look, policy was all here so that we will have a decision tonight. So do you want to talk about policy and then we can just make one motion for who, who we are appointing? Okay, I'm just gonna read, the, the scores are very close. I'll just say the top four in no particular order. Brianna Shea, Michelle Manning, Katiri Collins, and Jeanette Rodriguez were the four top. So any discussion on policy? Ready to just go with the, the rubric and the outcome?
Those are the top four scores.
Yeah, okay. Michelle Manning, Brianna Shea, Katiri Collins, and Jeanette Rodriguez.
So we need to make a motion to accept that.
Let me read all the names that we would have then tonight. So budget, Nicole Cordes. I, I think she was the only one available tonight. Okay. And then it would be for policy, Michelle Manning, Brianna Shea, Katiri Collins, Jeanette Rodriguez. For strategic planning, it would be Laura Urban, Josh Smith. And for wellness, Katie Garvin and Lauren Weinstein.
I make a motion to appoint respective members as presented tonight.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
That motion passes. Again, I want to thank everybody that put their name in. I know this is a difficult process. But we so, so much appreciate your willingness to serve. It does mean a lot to the school district. Thank you.
A quick question, given the time is 9:40. Do we want to consider tabling any of these items till the next meeting?
Being that it is almost the beginning of February, I don't think we can table the budget. Because Happy Valentine's Day is right around the corner.
I'll make a motion to table Khan Academy presentation to the next meeting.
I'll second that.
Oh, no. Is that why you're here? I rescind my, my, my motion. I think we should just stay right where we are. Sorry, Chip. I didn't realize that.
All right. That's it. We're gonna be, everybody's gonna be snappy, right?
Take as long as you want, sir.
Okay, that's good. Thank you for staying, Chip. We, we don't want to delay you any longer. So with that, we'll go to 6C, the Khan Academy presentation.
Good evening, everybody. Based on the overview of Khan Academy and Khan Migo from the last school committee meeting, Superintendent Petrazza asked Assistant Superintendent Seager and I to put a presentation together. So that's, that's what we've done. A lot of the work went to, went to Mr. Seager, but you know, I, I gave input on this and so we're, we're happy to be here to present this in hopefully a brief fashion and answer your questions. So do we have the slide deck? Assistant Superintendent Seager and I to put a presentation together. So that's, that's what we've done. A lot of the work went to, went to Mr. Seager, but you know, I, I gave input on this.
We're happy to be here to present this in hopefully a brief fashion and answer your questions.
Do we have the slide deck? Assistant Superintendent Seager and I to put a presentation together. So that's, that's what we've done. A lot of the work went to Mr. Seager, but you know, I
That sounds good.
Can you go to the next slide? Okay, so one of the biggest issues with the do we have a slide deck? Um, the best way to prepare students. A lot of the work went to the SAT and the PSAT. You know, so
That sounds good.
You go to the next slide. Where all of our students take the hopefully a yes. One of the biggest issues for year. Do we have a slide deck? Um, the best way we also incorporated for students. So it sounds good. You go to the next slide. Okay, so one of the biggest issues for year. Do we have a slide deck? Paul administration. We also so this gives us four different years. For students. So you go to the next slide. This would be the single better way to take it. We'll be so of students. Do we have a slide deck? Paul administration. This gives us four different years. So you go to the next slide. We'll be so of students. Do we have a slide? They're telling us they're they're gonna assist us with four different years. So we were taking it. We'll be so it was like do we have a slide? They could be called so they had they're gonna assist us with four different years. All the students we were we were we were we were we were it was like we were we were now we had all of our students we were we were they had they could assist us with four different years. We were we were we were we were we were it was like we were now we had all of our students we were we were it's common for so it's not so you know we were we were we were we were we were to find out we were we were we were we were so we were it's common for so so It's not so. There are. All the. We were. Doing. We were. So we were. To find out. We were. Now we have. All of our students. Other. So. So. All the students. Common for. So. 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 We were. Doing. 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 We were. Now we have. All of our students. Other. So. So. All the students. Common for. So. 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 We were. Doing. 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 We were. Now we have. All of our students. Other. So. So. All the students. Common for. So. 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 We were. Doing. 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 We were. So. 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 Hi, I'm Khan Migo. So. 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 So.
All right, that is going to bring us to item six D, discussion on the fiscal year 2026 budget update. And I will ask Mr. Kilpatrick.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the committee. So you have before you the presentation that I presented to the Budget Subcommittee last Tuesday. Just wanted to give you the same presentation, give you a little bit of an update on how we're crafting the fiscal 26 budget. So I'll get your feedback and have some good discussion. So, Madam Chair, members of the committee. So you have before you the baseline assumptions that we presented to the Budget Subcommittee last Tuesday. Emphasis on the word assumptions and these are subject to change as new information arises. So, starting at the top, we have our state aid. So the governor's preliminary budget came out on January 16th. So you have before you the baseline assumptions that we presented to the Budget Subcommittee last Tuesday. Emphasis on the word assumptions and these are subject to change as new information arises. So, starting at the top, we have our state aid. So the governor's preliminary budget came out on January 16th. So you have before you the baseline assumptions that we presented to the Budget Subcommittee last Tuesday. Emphasis on the word assumptions and these are subject to change as new information arises. So, starting at the top, we have our state aid. So the governor's preliminary budget came out on January 16th. So you have before you the baseline assumptions that we presented to the Budget Subcommittee last Tuesday. Emphasis on the word assumptions and these are subject to change as new information arises. So, starting at the top, we have our state aid. So the governor's preliminary budget came out on January 16th. So you have before you the baseline assumptions that we presented to the Budget Subcommittee last Tuesday. Emphasis on the word assumptions and these are subject to change as new information arises. So, starting at the top, we have our state aid. So the governor's preliminary budget came out on January 16th. So you have before you the baseline assumptions that we presented to the Budget Subcommittee last Tuesday. Emphasis on the word assumptions and these are subject to change as new information arises. So, starting at the top, we have our state aid. So the governor's preliminary budget came out on January 16th. So you have before you the baseline assumptions that we presented to the Budget Subcommittee last Tuesday. Emphasis on the word assumptions and these are subject to change as new information arises. So, starting at the top, we have our state aid. So the governor's preliminary budget came out on January 16th. So you have before you the baseline assumptions that we presented to the Budget Subcommittee last Tuesday. Emphasis on the word assumptions and these are subject to change as new information arises. So, starting at the top, we have our state aid. So the governor's preliminary budget came out on January 16th. So you have before you the baseline assumptions that we presented to the Budget Subcommittee last Tuesday. Emphasis on the word assumptions and these are subject to change as new information arises. So, starting at the top, we have our state aid. So the governor's preliminary budget came out on January 16th. So you have before you the baseline assumptions that we presented to the Budget Subcommittee last Tuesday. Emphasis on the word assumptions and these are subject to change as new information arises. So, starting at the top, we have our state aid. So the governor's preliminary budget came out on January 16th. So you have before you the baseline assumptions that we presented to the Budget Subcommittee last Tuesday. Emphasis on the word assumptions and these are subject to change as new information arises. So, starting at the top, we have our state aid. So the governor's preliminary budget came out on January 16th. So you have before you the baseline assumptions that we presented to the Budget Subcommittee last Tuesday. Emphasis on the word assumptions and these are subject to change as new information arises. So, starting at the top, we have our state aid. So the governor's preliminary budget came out on January 16th. So you have before you the baseline assumptions that we presented to the Budget Subcommittee last Tuesday. Emphasis on the word assumptions and these are subject to change as new information arises. So, starting at the top, we have our state aid. So the governor's preliminary budget came out on January 16th. So you have before you the baseline assumptions that we presented to the Budget Subcommittee last Tuesday. Emphasis on the word assumptions and these are subject to change as new information arises. So, starting at the top, we have our state aid. So the governor's preliminary budget came out on January 16th. So you have before you the baseline assumptions that we presented to the Budget Subcommittee last Tuesday. Emphasis on the word assumptions and these are subject to change as new information arises. So, starting at the top, we have our state aid. So the governor's preliminary budget came out on January 16th. So you have before you the baseline assumptions that we presented to the Budget Subcommittee last Tuesday. Emphasis on the word assumptions and these are subject to change as new information arises. So, starting at the top, we have our state aid. So the governor's preliminary budget came out on January 16th. So you have before you the baseline assumptions that we presented to the Budget Subcommittee last Tuesday. Emphasis on the word assumptions and these are subject to change as new information arises. So, starting at the top, we have our state aid. So the governor's preliminary budget came out on January 16th. So you have before you the baseline assumptions that we presented to the Budget Subcommittee last Tuesday. Emphasis on the word assumptions and these are subject to change as new information arises. So, starting at the top, we have our state aid. So the governor's preliminary budget came out on January 16th. So you have before you the baseline assumptions that we presented to the Budget Subcommittee last Tuesday. Emphasis on the word assumptions and these are subject to change as new information arises. So, starting at the top, we have our state aid. So the governor's preliminary budget came out on January 16th. So you have before you the baseline assumptions that we presented to the Budget Subcommittee last Tuesday. Emphasis on the word assumptions and these are subject to change as new information arises. So, starting at the top, we have our state aid. So the governor's preliminary budget came out on January 16th. So you have before you the baseline assumptions that we presented to the Budget Subcommittee last Tuesday. Emphasis on the word assumptions and these are subject to change as new information arises. So, starting at the top, we have our state aid. So the governor's preliminary budget came out on January 16th. So you have before you the baseline assumptions that we presented to the Budget Subcommittee last Tuesday. Emphasis on the word assumptions and these are subject to change as new information arises. So, starting at the top, we have our state aid. So the governor's preliminary budget came out on January 16th. So you have before you the baseline assumptions that we presented to the Budget Subcommittee last Tuesday. Emphasis on the word assumptions and these are subject to change as new information arises. So, starting at the top, we have our state aid. So the governor's preliminary budget came out on January 16th. So you have before you the baseline assumptions that we presented to the Budget Subcommittee last Tuesday. Emphasis on the word assumptions and these are subject to change as new information arises. So, starting at the top, we have our state aid. So the governor's preliminary budget came out on January 16th. So you have before you the baseline assumptions that we presented to the Budget Subcommittee last Tuesday. Emphasis on the word assumptions and these are subject to change as new information arises. So, starting at the top, we have our state aid. So the governor's preliminary budget came out on January 16th. So you have before you the baseline assumptions that we presented to the Budget Subcommittee last Tuesday. Emphasis on the word assumptions and these are subject to change as new information arises. So, starting at the top, we have our state aid. So the governor's preliminary budget came out on January 16th. So you have before you the baseline assumptions that we presented to the Budget Subcommittee last Tuesday. Emphasis on the word assumptions and these are subject to change as new information arises. So, starting at the top, we have our state aid. So the governor's preliminary budget came out on January 16th. So you have before you the baseline assumptions that we presented to the Budget Subcommittee last Tuesday. Emphasis on the word assumptions and these are subject to change as new information arises. So, starting at the top, we have our state aid. So the governor's preliminary budget came out on January 16th. So you have before you the baseline assumptions that we presented to the Budget Subcommittee last Tuesday. Emphasis on the word assumptions and these are subject to change as new information arises. So, starting at the top, we have our state aid. So the governor's preliminary budget came out on January 16th. So you have before you the baseline assumptions that we presented to the Budget Subcommittee last Tuesday. Emphasis on the word assumptions and these are subject to change as new information arises. So, starting at the top, we have our state aid. So the governor's preliminary budget came out on January 16th. So you have before you the baseline assumptions that we presented to the Budget Subcommittee last Tuesday. Emphasis on the word assumptions and these are subject to change as new information arises. So, starting at the top, we have our state aid. So the governor's preliminary budget came out on January 16th. So you have before you the baseline assumptions that we presented to the Budget Subcommittee last Tuesday. Emphasis on the word assumptions and these are subject to change as new information arises. So, starting at the top, we have our state aid. So the governor's preliminary budget came out on January 16th. So you have before you the baseline assumptions that we presented to the Budget Subcommittee last Tuesday. Emphasis on the word assumptions and these are subject to change as new information arises. So, starting at the top, we have our state aid. So the governor's preliminary budget came out on January 16th. So you have before you the baseline assumptions that we presented to the Budget Subcommittee last Tuesday. Emphasis on the word assumptions and these are subject to change as new information arises. So, starting at the top, we have our state aid. So the governor's preliminary budget came out on January 16th. So you have before you the baseline assumptions that we presented to the Budget Subcommittee last Tuesday. Emphasis on the word assumptions and these are subject to change as new information arises. So, starting at the top, we have our state aid. So the governor's preliminary budget came out on January 16th. So you have before you the baseline assumptions that we presented to the Budget Subcommittee last Tuesday. Emphasis on the word assumptions and these are subject to change as new information arises. So, starting at the top, we have our state aid. So the governor's preliminary budget came out on January 16th. So you have before you the baseline assumptions that we presented to the Budget Subcommittee last Tuesday. Emphasis on the word assumptions and these are subject to change as new information arises. So, starting at the top, we have our state aid. So the governor's preliminary budget came out on January 16th. So you have before you the baseline assumptions that we presented to the Budget Subcommittee last Tuesday. Emphasis on the word assumptions and these are subject to change as new information arises. So, starting at the top, we have our state aid. So the governor's preliminary budget came out on January 16th. So you have before you the baseline assumptions that we presented to the Budget Subcommittee last Tuesday. Emphasis on the word assumptions and these are subject to change as new information arises. So, starting at the top, we have our state aid. So the governor's preliminary budget came out on January 16th. So you have before you the baseline assumptions that we presented to the Budget Subcommittee last Tuesday. Emphasis on the word assumptions and these are subject to change as new information arises. So, starting at the top, we have our state aid. So the governor's preliminary budget came out on January 16th. So you have before you the baseline assumptions that we presented to the Budget Subcommittee last Tuesday. Emphasis on the word assumptions and these are subject to change as new information arises. So, starting at the top, we have our state aid. So the governor's preliminary budget came out on January 16th. So you have before you the baseline assumptions that we presented to the Budget Subcommittee last Tuesday. Emphasis on the word assumptions and these are subject to change as new information arises. So, starting at the top, we have our state aid. So the governor's preliminary budget came out on January 16th. So you have before you the baseline assumptions that we presented to the Budget Subcommittee last Tuesday. Emphasis on the word assumptions and these are subject to change as new information arises. So, starting at the top, we have our state aid. So the governor's preliminary budget came out on January 16th. So you have before you the baseline assumptions that we presented to the Budget Subcommittee last Tuesday. Emphasis on the word assumptions and these are subject to change as new information arises. So, starting at the top, we have our state aid. So the governor's preliminary budget came out on January 16th. So you have before you the baseline assumptions that we presented to the Budget Subcommittee last Tuesday. Emphasis on the word assumptions and these are subject to change as new information arises. So, starting at the top, we have our state aid. So the governor's preliminary budget came out on January 16th. So you have before you the baseline assumptions that we presented to the Budget Subcommittee last Tuesday. Emphasis on the word assumptions and these are subject to change as new information arises. So, starting at the top, we have our state aid. So the governor's preliminary budget came out on January 16th. So you have before you the baseline assumptions that we presented to the Budget Subcommittee last Tuesday. Emphasis on the word assumptions and these are subject to change as new information arises. So, starting at the top, we have our state aid. So the governor's preliminary budget came out on January 16th. So you have before you the baseline assumptions that we presented to the Budget Subcommittee last Tuesday. Emphasis on the word assumptions and these are subject to change as new information arises. So, starting at the top, we have our state aid. So the governor's preliminary budget came out on January 16th. So you have before you the baseline assumptions that we presented to the Budget Subcommittee last Tuesday. Emphasis on the word assumptions and these are subject to change as new information arises. So, starting at the top, we have our state aid. So the governor's preliminary budget came out on January 16th. So you have before you the baseline assumptions that we presented to the Budget Subcommittee last Tuesday. Emphasis on the word assumptions and these are subject to change as new information arises. So, starting at the top, we have our state aid. So the governor's preliminary budget came out on January 16th. So you have before you the baseline assumptions that we presented to the Budget Subcommittee last Tuesday. Emphasis on the word assumptions and these are subject to change as new information arises. So, starting at the top, we have our state aid. So the governor's preliminary budget came out on January 16th. So you have before you the baseline assumptions that we presented to the Budget Subcommittee last Tuesday. Emphasis on the word assumptions and these are subject to change as new information arises. So, starting at the top, we have our state aid. So the governor's preliminary budget came out on January 16th. So you have before you the baseline assumptions that we presented to the Budget Subcommittee last Tuesday. Emphasis on the word assumptions and these are subject to change as new information arises. So, starting at the top, we have our state aid. So the governor's preliminary budget came out on January 16th. So you have before you the baseline assumptions that we presented to the Budget Subcommittee last Tuesday. Emphasis on the word assumptions and these are subject to change as new information arises. So, starting at the top, we have our state aid. So the governor's preliminary budget came out on January 16th. So you have before you the baseline assumptions that we presented to the Budget Subcommittee last Tuesday. Emphasis on the word assumptions and these are subject to change as new information arises. So, starting at the top, we have our state aid. So the governor's preliminary budget came out on January 16th. So you have before you the baseline assumptions that we presented to the Budget Subcommittee last Tuesday. Emphasis on the word assumptions and these are subject to change as new information arises. So, starting at the top, we have our state aid. So the governor's preliminary budget came out on January 16th. So you have before you the baseline assumptions that we presented to the Budget Subcommittee last Tuesday. Emphasis on the word assumptions and these are subject to change as new information arises. So, starting at the top, we have our state aid. So the governor's preliminary budget came out on January 16th. So you have before you the baseline assumptions that we presented to the Budget Subcommittee last Tuesday. Emphasis on the word assumptions and these are subject to change as new information arises. So, starting at the top, we have our state aid. So the governor's preliminary budget came out on January 16th. So you have before you the baseline assumptions that we presented to the Budget Subcommittee last Tuesday. Emphasis on the word assumptions and these are subject to change as new information arises. So, starting at the top, we have our state aid. So the governor's preliminary budget came out on January 16th. So you have before you the baseline assumptions that we presented to the Budget Subcommittee last Tuesday. Emphasis on the word assumptions and these are subject to change as new information arises. So, starting at the top, we have our state aid. So the governor's preliminary budget came out on January 16th. So you have before you the baseline assumptions that we presented to the Budget Subcommittee last Tuesday. Emphasis on the word assumptions and these are subject to change as new information arises. So, starting at the top, we have our state aid. So the governor's preliminary budget came out on January 16th. So you have before you the baseline assumptions that we presented to the Budget Subcommittee last Tuesday. Emphasis on the word assumptions and these are subject to change as new information arises. So, starting at the top, we have our state aid. So the governor's preliminary budget came out on January 16th. So you have before you the baseline assumptions that we presented to the Budget Subcommittee last Tuesday. Emphasis on the word assumptions and these are subject to change as new information arises. So, starting at the top, we have our state aid. So the governor's preliminary budget came out on January 16th. So you have before you the baseline assumptions that we presented to the Budget Subcommittee last Tuesday. Emphasis on the word assumptions and these are subject to change as new information arises. So, starting at the top, we have our state aid. So the governor's preliminary budget came out on January 16th. So you have before you the baseline assumptions that we presented to the Budget Subcommittee last Tuesday. Emphasis on the word assumptions and these are subject to change as new information arises. So, starting at the top, we have our state aid. So the governor's preliminary budget came out on January 16th. So you have before you the baseline assumptions that we presented to the Budget Subcommittee last Tuesday. Emphasis on the word assumptions and these are subject to change as new information arises. So, starting at the top, we have our state aid. So the governor's preliminary budget came out on January 16th. So you have before you the baseline assumptions that we presented to the Budget Subcommittee last Tuesday. Emphasis on the word assumptions and these are subject to change as new information arises. So, starting at the top, we have our state aid. So the governor's preliminary budget came out on January 16th. So you have before you the baseline assumptions that we presented to the Budget Subcommittee last Tuesday. Emphasis on the word assumptions and these are subject to change as new information arises. So, starting at the top, we have our state aid. So the governor's preliminary budget came out on January 16th. So you have before you the baseline assumptions that we presented to the Budget Subcommittee last Tuesday. Emphasis on the word assumptions and these are subject to change as new information arises. So, starting at the top, we have our state aid. So the governor's preliminary budget came out on January 16th. It's not the budget.[662.89][662.95][S02. Must be fast.[664.89][664.95][S02. Probably 1000 or 2000.[667.89][667.95][S02. Must be fast.[670.89][670.95][S02. Thank you, sir.[672.89][672.95][S02. That's what you said.[674.89][674.95][S02. So basically, they have a big.[677.89][677.95][S02. It's not the budget.[680.89][680.95][S02. Must be fast.[683.89][683.95][S02. Those are the good ones.[686.89][686.95][S02. Thank you, sir.[689.89][689.95][S02. That's what you said.[691.89][691.95][S02. So basically, they have a big.[694.89][694.95][S02. It's not the budget.[697.89][697.95][S02. Must be fast.[700.89][700.95][S02. Those are the good ones.[703.89][703.95][S02. Thank you, sir.[706.89][706.95][S02. That's what you said.[709.89][709.95][S02. So basically, they have a big.[712.89][712.95][S02. It's not the budget.[715.89][715.95][S02. Must be fast.[718.89][718.95][S02. Those are the good ones.[721.89][721.95][S02. Thank you, sir.[724.89][724.95][S02. That's what you said.[727.89][727.95][S02. So basically, they have a big.[730.89][730.95][S02. It's not the budget.[733.89][733.95][S02. Must be fast.[736.89][736.95][S02. Those are the good ones.[739.89][739.95][S02. Thank you, sir.[742.89][742.95][S02. That's what you said.[745.89][745.95][S02. So basically, they have a big.[748.89][748.95][S02. It's not the budget.[751.89][751.95][S02. Must be fast.[754.89][754.95][S02. Those are the good ones.[757.89][757.95][S02. Thank you, sir.[760.89][760.95][S02. That's what you said.[763.89][763.95][S02. So basically, they have a big.[766.89][766.95][S02. It's not the budget.[769.89][769.95][S02. Must be fast.[772.89][772.95][S02. Those are the good ones.[775.89][775.95][S02. Thank you, sir.[778.89][778.95][S02. That's what you said.[781.89][781.95][S02. So basically, they have a big.[784.89][784.95][S02. It's not the budget.[787.89][787.95][S02. Must be fast.[790.89][790.95][S02. Those are the good ones.[793.89][793.95][S02. Thank you, sir.[796.89][796.95][S02. That's what you said.[799.89][799.95][S02. That's what you said.[802.89][802.95][S02. That's what you said.[805.89][805.95][S02. That's what you said.[808.89][808.95][S02. That's what you said.[811.89][811.95][S02. That's what you said.[814.89][814.95][S02. That's what you said.[817.89][817.95][S02. That's what you said.[820.89][820.95][S02. That's what you said.[823.89][823.95][S02. That's what you said.[826.89][826.95][S02. That's what you said.[829.89][829.95][S02. That's what you said.[832.89][832.95][S02. That's what you said.[835.89][835.95][S02. That's what you said.[838.89][838.95][S02. That's what you said.[841.89][841.95][S02. That's what you said.[844.89][844.95][S02. That's what you said.[847.89][847.95][S02. That's what you said.[850.89][850.95][S02. That's what you said.[853.89][853.95][S02. That's what you said.[856.89][856.95][S02. That's what you said.
My question really is within our purview, but I'm just curious if you guys have heard any further discussion from the town as far as there was a gentleman who approached the town council and asked them to investigate funding us for people. Has that been brought to your attention that the town has looked into that or anything of that sort?
Great question. Brian Sylvia, Town Finance Director emailed me today or last night, rather, prior to the town council meeting, just letting me know that it's possible that it would come up. I'm not aware that it was discussed. He's running the exercise. I had reached out to Mark Dunham. I'd to make sure I understood exactly how that exercise would work. He replied. So I crushed the numbers. Rough estimate would be $2 million cut to our current property tax transfer. If they go that route.
2 million on top of the, like, 2 million.
So for 55.9 million, down 2 million.
It's a fun balance question. So I think our policy for, I think, a long time has been that we want to be between 1 and 2% of budget and fund balance. But I've heard several times, and I don't know who the body, there's some GFOA. Yeah, body that recommends actually a higher balance. And I'm not sure what the history is of us having a lower policy than what is the recommendation. And I don't know. So maybe you could explain who the body is.
Sure, the Government Finance Officers Association. Government Finance Officers Association. They actually have some more recent guidance. They have a series of articles they put out called Rethinking, you know, X Topic, whatever it is. They have one about reserves, rethinking reserves. And the more current guidance is more like thinking about reserves instead of as a savings account, more like an insurance policy. So basically, towns and cities and towns and school districts should do basically a risk assessment and figure out what the right level of reserves is based on your, your community risk, so to speak. So it's more, it's getting away from strict percentages and more towards what's your financial risk profile like kind of thing. Like I said in that article too.
Yeah, I mean, I take it just, it, I think it gives the wrong impression that we seem to be consistently over what we, this sort of self-imposed low, what I think of the low limit. And it's worth us taking a look at adjusting that to something more, maybe more modern or more realistic because even at 3%, it's not a huge amount of money compared to our budget if we have, you know, like you said, if we think about it as an insurance policy, it's a pretty small one.
Great.
On that topic, especially if we're, if we're self-funding our capital programs. So we need it. So.
Great point. Where else can I need that in for unexpected loss of other funding sources?
Exactly.
Sorry. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
All right. Thank you all very much. Appreciate it.
Okay, that will bring us to. Do we need to adopt that or is that just an update? Discussion on where. Sorry. So 6E, Discussion Action Review of School Year 25-26 Annual Calendar Drafts. And there's two versions posted. So, Mr. Brink.
Yep, so actually, I don't need any action tonight. However, I did want to again try and further the discussions or come back to the committee as quickly as possible with the information that was requested. In terms of the local surveys that were done regarding the calendar, in terms of whether it be the community or the bargaining units, the appetite was to start after Labor Day, maintain the existing vacations and get out before Juneteenth. What I've submitted to you today is before you is doing that, but in two different, it accomplishes it. Version one, though, does not take into account taking any school time off for any religious observance, including Good Friday. I have met now twice with the members of our largest bargaining unit regarding this and they, they feel confident that they will have members and that we will be able to run the district with April 3rd, which is Good Friday, if we were to have that in session. So with that information, I crafted this calendar. The one change, or let me just take, before I go through the changes, it is a very traditional calendar in that, again, it's after teachers start before Labor Day with professional development orientation. We then have students start on the after Labor Day, and I'll get into that at the end. And what we've done here is we've highlighted where, because of religious services, there are evening, we want to make people aware of those as well as there may be restrictions at, at the evening. What this also does is that this calendar in version one does maintain November 26th as a day off for all folks. And has us, if we count these all up, to get to our 180 days, we would be with no emergency cancellations, school would end on the 16th of June. I will say, though, that one aspect of this calendar that I did not revise are the terms. So I've not gone through adjusting the terms, so that may be incorrect. What version two does is it puts in not just the Judeo-Christian holidays, but our Jewish, for our Jewish members of the community and Muslim members of the community. We put in into this calendar those religious observances of the holiest days in terms of Yom Kippur as being a day off on October 2nd. We then have Elah Fader in March 20th for Islam or for the Muslim faith, excuse me. And then it would take Good Friday on the 3rd. What this calendar, though, needs to do in order to have us then, if we were to take those three days off for religious observances, and that would be no school for the entire district, would be, I would need to take away that November 26th date in order to end before Juneteenth. If we did not do that, we would be in the, we would be in the place of coming back on the 22nd, and that does not account for any snow days. So again, wanted to give the committee something to think about, something to deliberate. Again, Mr. Lander is not here, but again, there was appetite in terms of discussion or at least having it come before the committee in terms of different holidays and the recognition of those officially on a school calendar. Again, I do not need action on this, but wanted to bring it forward for your consideration. Last but not least, there would be a potential change in operations that I had mentioned in previous discussions, Rhode Island General Law allows the first day of school to be for transition grades only. In this case, what we would be proposing would be that on September, on both calendars, would be that on September 2nd, that grades nine, six, and we begin kindergarten screenings would be the first day of school on the 2nd. I have worked with the both building administration and union leadership that believes that we can run a equitable across all departments. Kind of a shared lift of that new student orientation where potentially a model of every department taking on some aspect of, of the day, freeing up the rest of the bargaining unit members for additional professional development time as well as for some members or for that kindergarten screening. This, these, both of these calendars does contemplate that. But again, is, is, does not need to be decided at this time and is open for considerations. But two calendars with a couple of different objectives being met in each to go through the process of discussion and we can come up with a hybrid or we can, we can take a look at lots of different options. So again, version one is know if we recognize on the calendar, but do not, but still hold school. And draft two would be if on those holy days for the, for the three faiths, if we did not have school. And that is the primary difference. And again, the term dates are incorrect on both versions.
Any questions regarding the two calendars?
Yeah, I mean, what, you brought this before us, but what would be the deciding factor between the two of them? Would that be, would this be brought up on a future agenda to discuss as an action to choose one or the other or?
Yes, I think that in terms of it having a full committee or having dialogue or presenting this to the community, I know we've received emails. Or if we, you know, offered public comment or if the committee was leaning one towards the other to give the community an opportunity to say, here's the proposed calendar that we are going for. You know, speak now or we're going to vote at the next one. Or we would like a hybrid or could you, some sort of guidance that if we wanted to do one or the other or back to the drawing board to try and accomplish something else, we have time to do that as well as then seek further community comment. For example, I believe it was Ms. Manson-Anti, Ms. Manson-Anti, sorry about that. Last time that brought up, yes, it's, it's a great idea for kindergarten screening in order to have the most relevant data, but what is the impact on our kindergarten families? So to have the community know that that's a real possibility before we vote on it might be something for consideration.
Thank you so much. All right, that will bring us to 6F, Discussion Action, Rescinding a Policy Number 1262A, Title IX, Policy and Grievance Procedures. Michael, do you want to talk to us about that?
So as you may know, there were new regulations, new Title IX regulations that the Biden administration instituted that basically started and were intended at least to deal with potential incidents of sexual harassment that started from August 1st moving forward. The old regulations, I believe it was 2019, maybe 2020, I think it was 2020, I'm sorry, were in effect beforehand and dealt with everything that happened before that August 1st date. So there were two separate policies that you had, one that dealt with incidents of harassment that may have occurred before August 1st and one that deals, dealt with incidents that happened August, after August 1st. Very recently, the federal courts have decided and determined that the new Biden regulations are unconstitutional and basically struck them. So what this agenda item is designed to do is to strike the new policy in accordance with the, the recent decisions. You still have the old policy that is, remains in full effect to deal with anything that may arise now. Just for flavor, the new, the real impetus in behind stands with a lot of the gender transitioning and whatnot. So a lot of the old policy still deals with sexual harassment, still deals with it's just where, how far you can take it. But you still do have that policy on the books. It is still good. So what we're doing here is striking the new policy that leaves the old.
Any questions? All right. I will entertain a motion to rescinding the policy.
Make a motion to be, is that policy 1262A?
All right, any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, that motion passes. That's going to bring us to the end of our meeting.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
All right.